I'm calling to order the Monday, December 16th, 2010 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the municipality of Anchorage. Secretary, please call the roll.
Nancy Keys?
Yeah.
Jim Frederick?
He's excused.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Arthur Eishem?
Here.
Bruce Phelps? Stacy Dean? Terry Parks?
Yeah.
Dana Cruz?
Here.
Richard Wilson?
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. We -- due to some misunderstanding, we don't have any of the minutes tonight, so I accept a positive motion, postpone those until next week.
So moved.
Just a second, thank you. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, the minutes, items B, 1, 2, and 3 are postponed until next week. Item C, Special Order of Business, Executive Sessions and Disclosures. Ms. Yoshimura, would you handle the disclosures this evening?
Thank you. Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No.
Mr. Parks?
None.
Mr. Wilson?
None.
Mr. Cruz?
None.
Mr. Eishem?
Yes, in regards to case G-2, 2010-129, the AMAT review, I'm a member of the church that owns some property that is involved in this whole plan. It's in all sections, 1, 2, and 3, so I just want to be aware of that. But because this is a plan and doesn't really involve any zoning changes or anything like that this evening, I think I'm qualified, but I just want to disclose that, that exists.
All right, thank you for your disclosure. And in regards to case 2010-129, the AMAT review by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Eagle River Central Business District and Residential Core Study, I would like to disclose that I am a former equity partner and owner of a 10.25 development located in downtown Eagle River currently called Coronado Park, but I am no longer an equity member, although I am employed by Eagle River Downtown LLC as a project manager and broker for the sale of the lots.
Okay, and would this decision have any impact on you as far as financial impact?
It would have no financial impact because I am not an owner.
I don't know, okay. And I think that you're just disclosed for the sake of disclosing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is interim election of officers. I believe we have some discussion on that?
Yeah, I would like to make a recommendation that we postpone the election of officers until we have -- several of our commissioners were not here tonight.
Do you want to make that date certain, 12/13?
12/13 is fine.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? That is approved. We will have election of officers on December 13th. Let the record show that Mr. Phelps has arrived. Mr. Phelps, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, item 3, under Special Order of Business, staff, do you wish to discuss S-11143-4?
Uh, to the Chair, Mr. Chair, just what's in the packet, the item has been withdrawn, the request was received after the agenda had gone out, therefore, the request is in front of you to allow the item to be withdrawn. The parties have come to agreement.
Very good. Do you need a motion on that or not?
Uh, to the Chair, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
You do, okay. Take a positive motion that Ms. Case's withdrawn and we have no further involvement in it. Ms. Pease, moved?
Moved.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura, seconded. Any discussion? Any opposition? Okay, we have no consent agenda this evening, no unfinished business. Move on to the regular agenda. Item 5A, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those of you who I don't know, my name is Erica McConnell. I'm a planner in the Long Range Planning Division and the project manager of the Title 21 rewrite. The ordinance in front of you takes the procedures of the various land use boards and commissions that are currently in the Code of Regulations and moves them into -- consolidates them and moves them into Title 4, which is that portion of municipal code that initiates all the boards and commissions for the municipality. It does create a new section that relates just for these four boards and commissions, so it doesn't have an impact on the other boards and commissions in the muni. It doesn't have any significant changes, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, to the Chair, Ms. McConnell. Usually when we get changes to code, we see what language has been deleted in brackets and then the new information is underlined. So I'm wondering what information -- how do we know what the previous language was? And in particular, I thought that with the Planning and Zoning Commission and maybe the Plating Board, there had previously been language that sought to ensure that no single professional interest was overrepresented, so I have those two questions, please.
To the Chair, Commissioner Pease. The language that's amended in Sections 1, 2, and 3 does have underlined and bracketed capitalized changes marked. Section 4 is a brand-new section, so it doesn't need to be underlined, it's all new text. I did not prepare a comparison of Section 4 to the Code of Regulations because there aren't that many changes, but I could do that if you would prefer to see that in the future. In terms of language that says "no profession shall be overrepresented," I don't remember such language. It's pretty new in the Title 21 rewrite that there actually be a statement that certain professions are to be represented, and so that was carried forward from agreements that were made in the Chapter 2 section of the rewrite are carried forward in this ordinance, but I don't remember anything about overrepresentation.
Okay, if I may continue. There's sort of a intent, sort of a modest or mild intent to ensure diversity. Under the language for the Plating, Urban Design, and I think the Zoning Board of Appeals, we don't have that under the Planning section. It would seem to me that diversity of representation would be desirable in all of these commissions. Is there any reason why the Plannings -- and I have some language, which I'll get to when we talk about motion to approve, but is there any reason why the Planning and Zoning Commission shouldn't have some nod toward a diversity of interests represented?
If you look on page 11, lines 23 through 25, it says, "At least four members of the commission shall have professional experience in land use planning, architecture, landscape architecture, or law."
Yes, that's a little different from a diversity of background, education, and interests, and I just wasn't sure why our commission was handled differently.
Back when Chapter 2, well, the public hearing draft of Chapter 2 was being worked out, each board kind of got to approve their own section in terms of the diversity of professional qualifications, and so each of these was really what that particular board agreed to. So this language is what the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was in place at the time, and this would have been a couple of years ago, agreed to. What's in the Plating Board section is what they wanted. So it does vary, but that's because each board and commission really did get to have input on their own qualifications.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Questions, to the Chair, for Ms. McConnell. On Section 3, lines 25 and 26, I've had this question in the past, "And such minutes shall record the vote of each member physically present upon every question formally presented to the board or commissions for its consideration." In the past, some resolutions have said that it has passed by a majority of the vote or unanimous. Unanimous is obviously not a problem, but I'm wondering if what this then would indicate, that if there is a "no" vote, that the commissioner who votes "no," or commissioners, plural, that those "no" votes are recorded as part of the minutes?
My reading of this would indicate that would be the case.
Okay, good, thank you. I have a couple of other questions, which have to do -- hang on, just one second. On the matter of resolutions, there have been several resolutions that have taken a very, very long time to get to the Assembly, and of course, when it comes to rezones or development activities, time is an expense. And I'm wondering if there's been any consideration for "resolutions must be submitted at the next scheduled hearing and shall be passed on to the Assembly, no later than within a specified period of time." Have you had any discussions about that situation internally?
No, we haven't, and it's interesting you should bring that up because the current code actually requires that resolutions be returned -- actually, let me check if it's resolutions or minutes. I'm sorry, it's minutes that are required to come back within two weeks. So no, we didn't have a discussion of a time limit for resolutions being returned to the body and passed on to the Assembly.
How would staff feel about such a requirement?
I think we'd probably need to discuss it.
Okay. The other comment that I have heard is that resolutions could be prepared by petitioners with just the approval of staff so that these matters could be more expedited. Has there been any internal discussions about that?
No, there hasn't.
How would staff feel about that? The Planning Department feel about that?
Well, the resolutions should come directly from the findings that the commission makes, so it shouldn't be -- they shouldn't be difficult to create. I mean, as long as the commission is making, you know, is doing their job, your job, in terms of making findings. But again, I think we would -- if you're asking for whether we think petitioners should be allowed to write them, again, I think we would need to discuss that internally.
Not the commissioners, the petitioner.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Right, right. Well, I'm looking for a way to expedite all this and to move things along a little more quickly than what has historically been done in the past. Any other suggestions?
Not off the top of my head, okay.
Anything else, Ms. Yoshimura? I'll come back to you, okay? I think Mr. Phelps has got a question.
Actually, concerns somewhat the same issue that was raised previously about the composition of the board. I was looking at the composition statement under Planning Commission, Plating Board, and Zoning Board, and the like, and typically, what it says is that members, this is for example on page 13, item C, line 10, actually, line 11 and 12, "Members shall represent diversity of background, education, and interest to complement the work of the board." Now, this type of statement is also found in the Zoning Board of Appeals, Urban Design Commission, and Plating Board, but it's not found on the Planning Commission, and it seems like there ought to be more consistency in what we're trying to represent in terms of composition to the community. And it would seem that, I guess what I don't understand is, under D, the first sentence, I think that's a reality that, you know, anybody that comes before the commissioner wants to be on the commission, "shall have an interest demonstrated in public service and real estate issues." That's not the same thing as making a statement of diversity of backgrounds. So can you explain to me why there's a difference between the Planning Commission and all the other commissions?
As I tried to explain to Ms. Pease, when these sections were part of Chapter 2 and were reviewed by the various boards and commissions about two or so years ago, each board and commission basically indicated the language that they would like to see in terms of qualifications. So the language that you see here is reflecting what the boards and commissions of that time decided was appropriate language. It's perfectly fine to come in at this time and make it more consistent among -- within itself.
Okay. You know, when we were reviewing that, we didn't have the context of what was being recommended for the other boards and commissions, and now that we're seeing it, I can see that we may want to change our approach. Another question I have is on page 15, it's going to be item G, beginning on line 34. And what I'm noticing here is that there's a whole appeal process that's outlined in the code now, and this is a pretty straightforward process. What is the reason for including this process in detail in the code?
Mr. Phelps, your question is, what is the reason for including the appeal process in the code?
No, what I'm trying to say is that there's a detailed process that's identified under item G on page 12, and that many aspects of that process are the standard process that every board utilizes, and so, for example, under 4, it says, "The boards are here, brief staff presentation. The opponent should give his or her presentation. The staff should give this presentation. The hearing then should be opened at the public testimony." That's in other words, those are normal procedural steps that the Plating Board would use, the Planning Commission would use, and the question would be, why is it necessary to specify those steps in this particular aspect of the code? There may be a good reason, I just don't know.
I don't know if it's a good reason. The only answer I can give you is that this is what is in the current Code of Regulations under the ZIBA section, so I carried it forward. I don't know the genesis of why it was put into the Code of Regulations in the first place.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if I knew why this was in there, if there was a particular reason for its inclusion. And I guess we don't have to have the answer this evening, but I would like to know, because once this thing gets into code, it stays there for a very long time.
I will look into that for you.
Ms. Yoshimura, did you find some other questions that you wish to ask?
No, I'm finished.
Finished, okay. I have one question, Ms. McConnell. Under the, page 4 of 18, line 5, talks about special order of business and executive sessions, and typically, I believe all boards and commissions have to have disclosures, so I would -- I'm curious as to why that isn't included. As a sub-A under 3?
Again, Mr. Chair, this is carrying forward what's in the current code.
Okay.
There's actually, under the disclosures section, it just says that the disclosures have to be made before the staff report of the case or as soon as the commissioner figures out that they have a conflict of interest. It practices, I've witnessed, has been that the disclosures are kind of all done ahead of time under Agenda Number 3, the Special Order of Business, but the current code doesn't mention anything about that.
Okay. All right, any further questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I don't know if we'll end up voting on this tonight or not, but through the Chair, I would like to get staff's reaction to a proposed sentence to ensure diversity on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to not go with the words used in the other three sections. I don't know whether they might want to change those words too, but the wording in those other sections under Plating, Zoning Board of Appeals, et cetera, is "to complement the work of the board," and grammatically, I just don't think that works, because you complement something that's already done, and I think, well, anyway, that's, I think, poor a word choice. But the proposal I'd like to make is that in Section 5D, and maybe in some of the other sections for the other boards, the concept of diverse representation be reflected thusly. Members shall represent a diversity of professional and educational backgrounds, interests, and geographical residency to allow a broad and equitable representation of community interests. And I guess I'll get staff's reaction, and then if we vote on it, I'll speak to that.
May I suggest that I take back Ms. Pease's suggestion, Ms. Yoshimura's suggestions, Mr. Phelps' question, and bring answers and staff's opinions back to the commission next month?
Apparently, there's no pressure to get this immediately done.
The Plating Board isn't able to see this until their first January meeting, anyway, so no, there isn't particular pressure.
Okay, I think that there's a consensus that we don't need to have an absolute decision on this tonight, and it would probably be a good idea to let you massage it a little bit and then bring it back before the commission again.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yeah, if you're going to go ahead and discuss it, I will just put out some points that reasons for proposing that language. We've always had sort of an informal balance of interests in terms of geography, and I think that's really important. I think when the Hillside District Plan came up, several of us who live or have businesses there could really go into depth on some of those issues. Likewise, there's some issues that come up where the female point of view might be important to have, such as personal security or safety. We might be tuned into things that others might not. You know, it's always good to try to have some racial or economic diversity, and so I think by just saying interests, differing interests, we capture that a little bit. And then, of course, there, you know, we all have specific interests. Mr. Wellington was always there on the bike issues, and Ms. Yoshimura speaks up for various housing issues and so on, so I think it's important to have that representation.
Any further comments?
Yeah, rest to speak. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the statement, and this is under the, for example, Section D, 44100 on page 12, where it says, "There shall be," or "The commission shall have professional experience in land use planning, architecture, landscape, and architecture, or law." Well, what happens if you can't find professions of that type? And as we probably have observed over the years, it's very difficult to get all that representation all the time on the Planning Commission, and if we were to take action on an item that we did not have representation on, a very smart attorney can come back and say, "Up, procedural error," and I think that you, I don't think we want that to happen. So I think you need to rethink this, this concept of it's mandatory that you have these and this following representation on a board or commission. At least, that's my opinion.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Well, I guess I have a little different opinion than Ms. Pease and Mr. Phelps in that regard, as someone who has frequently appeared between, for example, at the Plating Board, I can, as a petitioner, I can tell you how frustrating it is, as a petitioner, to have to deal with boards that don't have any sort of professional or business expertise related to land use planning, architecture, landscape, architecture, or law. So I feel that this is a very positive step forward to improving the quality of commission and board members, and keeping in mind that there are nine commissioners, I think four, that have these experiences and professional and business background are extremely important to petitioners, and that there are still plenty of seats available with five additional members that can represent geographical diversity or other types of diversity. So I would be in favor of Section 5, 4.40.100, of keeping item number D in its totality.
I guess it's not worth debating, but I would just ask the staff to identify for us if, in fact, we have four commissioners presently that have a land use planning, architecture, landscape, architecture, or law background on the commission now.
Mr. Phelps, I'm not familiar with the backgrounds of everyone on the commission, so I think you would have to self-identify.
But I think you have the information.
You mean back at the office?
Yeah.
I will look for that.
Well, the point I'm trying to make here is that the concept is good, but I'm concerned about the requirement that you must have a certain member representation, because if you don't have that composition, there is procedural error. So I won't debate anymore, but that's my concern.
Can I answer to Mr. Phelps's question?
Go ahead.
...that this commission does qualify for item number D?
Any further comments from members of the commission? Okay, so staff, you feel you've got direction on what you need to do? Okay, very good. And we can look for that at the first meeting in January? And the next item is 2008071, staff?
Mr. Chair, there's no action on this item. It's just an informational item only about a conditional use being abandoned. It's just required in the code that they can advise you of that, so it goes away quicker.
Okay, so no action is required?
No, sir.
And basically, they have met all the requirements of the conditional use?
Correct. They just would like this way to remove from the title and from any issues they have quicker.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, now we'll move into our public hearing section of the meeting. Procedures by which the public may speak to the commission is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing item, the Chair will ask the public for testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission rules of procedure, and these time limits are as follows. The petitioner has 10 minutes, and they may reserve part of that time for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, things of that nature, they have five minutes to speak, and then individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by members of the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action that the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven Our first public hearing tonight is for case 2010-128. This has been requested to be postponed until 12/13/2010. We'll need a motion to postpone. Mr. Phelps moved, Ms. Pease seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, 2010-128 is postponed to date certain, 12/13/2010. Second case is 2010-129, municipality of Anchorage, AMAT review by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Eagle River Central Business District and Residential Core Study Public Review Draft. We had a work session on that at 5:30 this evening, and we'll now hear staff presentation. Ms. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Vivian Underwood. I'm a senior transportation planner with the
I'm a senior transportation planner with the Municipality of Anchorage, and it's now the Community Development Department formerly, I was formerly with the Traffic Department. We moved. For this item, it's G two on the agenda. There's a packet out there. I hope I have enough for you all. There's a memo, a cover memo, a public review draft of the Eagle River CBD circulation study, and a staff issue and response summary. The need for this study has been identified since the two thousand three Chugiak Eagle River LRTP, and I'd like to stress that it's not a plan, it is just a study, and we're not required to actually bring it before the Planning and Zoning Commission or to the Assembly, but we wanted to do that for good public involvement. It seems that our next required step by the community in addressing worsening conditions in downtown Eagle River. The goal is to have an actionable plan that has support of business owners, residents, elected officials, and agencies, so that when it comes time to take some of these projects to request for funding before the legislature and before the Suburso Board, before, for the Transportation Improvement Program and the CIP, that everybody will be pretty much on the same page. We have had a significant amount of public involvement for this project, even though we've had a low budget, relatively low budget. The Department of Transportation has been an active partner. We've had a technical committee. Public involvement began in December with outreach to the public through Mary Merchant Munch. We were there and met with the public, and we've had three public meetings. We've met with the Suburso Board, the Eagle River Valley Community Council, Eagle River Community Council, Southport Community Council, the Chugiak Eagle River Chamber of Commerce, members and board. We've had information booths at Jitters and Cars in April, and we had a booth at the Bear Paw Festival. We also offered a joint technical advisory committee and planning and zoning work session on September ninth. The schedule is that we'd like to have a finally approved study by the Policy Committee for AMAT sometime during the first quarter of two thousand eleven, so that these recommendations can be rolled into the long-range transportation plan for Anchorage that's due in two thousand eleven. So for the presentation tonight, I know that my time is limited, and we really want to hear from you, the public. So I'm just going to go through the presentation that I gave the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier. I'm not going to take as much time, but I would like to just quickly touch on what this study's all about. From the very beginning, we wanted to hear from the public. We wanted to know what your problems were. So we asked the community to tell us where you were experiencing difficulties and what you saw as potential solutions. One of the main issues is the functioning of the Old Glen Highway, and specifically at Artillery Road interchange, North Eagle River interchange, and for pedestrian crossings and connections, and for transit and bike facilities. Some of the issues that we heard about was an overdependence on the Old Glen Highway for north-south travel. There's just no other way to get there from south to north, other than the Old Glen Highway. Limited east-west connections across the Old Glen Highway, congestion from closely spaced intersections, left turn access limitations during peak hours, and turns to and from driveways slowing traffic down. We know there is a problem. It's not just merely anecdotal information. In two thousand seven, the Chugiak Eagle River LRTP, using two thousand four data, showed that no intersections were failing at the time, and no roadway segments were failing. But understand this, now with this study, using two thousand seven and two thousand nine data, we see three intersections failing today at peak times. This is not in the future, this is today. One intersection, Farm Avenue and Old Glen Highway, was not even anticipated to fail by two thousand twenty-seven. So things are changing faster than we had ever anticipated in two thousand seven. The Federal Highway Administration requires us to use the most recent population and housing estimates when we do plans and studies. We have used the projections from the Institute of Social and Economic Research from the University of Alaska, nicknamed Iser. We've done this in the past, and we do it every time we do a study. Keep in mind that the comprehensive plan that was redone in two thousand six actually was more aggressive than what we're anticipating now. Iser has backed off on their projections, largely due to the economic slowdown that everybody's been experiencing. So what we're expecting now is by two thousand thirty-five, eleven thousand new households in Eagle River and approximately five thousand new jobs. The allocation of where that development is going to happen is also directed by the comprehensive plan, and we know that some of it's going to happen in the Powder Reserve, some of it's going to happen in the seven seventy, and in the past, large growth has been out in the Eagle River Valley, but now things are slowing down out there, and we need to allocate where that traffic is going to go. The number of households is key, but then you have to figure out where is that traffic going to go, where those households are. So we have a traffic demand model that projects where the traffic is going to go. I should say that, well, I don't know how much time I have. I'll just quickly zip through this. The public realize that doing nothing is not an option. If we do nothing in two thousand thirty-five, the situation is simply going to get worse. There's going to be more congestion on the Old Glen Highway, longer waits at signals and ramps, greater difficulty crossing the Old Glen Highway, and left turns will only be possible at signals and off turn, and off-peak times. This picture up here is a picture of level of service, which is a comparison of volume to capacity. And the red is basically signifies total breakdown. The green is free flow, and D is almost failing. So you can see that if we do nothing, that's no option at all. This is a diagram that shows the extended effects of the congested, these are the congested areas and the extended effects of the increased traffic. If we do nothing, the Glen Highway would have to be increased to possibly six lanes to handle the traffic, to be able to function the way it functions today. It would require additional right-of-way, and it would have serious impacts for businesses. It simply is not an option. So our consultants, Kittleson and Associates, came up with three different what-if solutions or scenarios, and we asked them to do two of them based on recommendations in the two thousand three Eagle River revitalization study. One was to look at a one-way, a one-way couplet concept, and the other one was to look at a possible new connection on the east side of the Old Glen Highway. So the first strategy has neither of those in it. It's just a system of connected streets. It would complete a network of two-way streets, provide four north-south street connections, provide eight east-west crossings of the Old Glen, and provide a partial interchange at Farm Avenue. The idea is more of a grid connection that Eagle River has never had the benefit of This is just to show you the level of service that would be improved to with solution strategy number one, and I should say that it's pretty much the same for all three general, big-picture Here's a typical cross-section of what the Glen Highway could look like with strategy number one. I'm going to try to zip through this, because I want, we want to hear from you all. Strategy number two was the Old Glen couplet strategy. It would convert the Old Glen Highway to a one-way northbound and extend Business Boulevard and make it one-way southbound. It would realign Artillery Road with Monty and extend Farm Avenue across the Glen Highway. And here's a picture of what that would look like. And here again, the level of service is much improved. We have some opportunities for pedestrian amenities and for landscaping. Solution strategy number three, they called the Main Street Solution. It is, the Old Glen Highway remains a two-way, has more of a Main Street character. There's more that we could do, one lane each direction, on-street parking, wide sidewalks, lower speeds, turn pockets. But once again, we have the Farm Avenue over the Glen Highway and aligned with Eagle River Loop Road. This strategy utilizes a new collector to the east side of the Old Glen Highway. And you see that a lot of the red is out within the study area. The bottom line was, when we heard from the public, we realized that the public was not ready to commit to such drastic measures as one-way couplets or solutions that might have potentially greater impacts to residential areas. These are the common features that the consultants identified that are common to all three solutions, and the public grasped that then these actually became the short-term solutions. And we asked the consultants to prioritize them, and they've done that in the final report. The green is the high-priority projects, and this matches what we've heard from the public. Over and over, we heard that Artillery Road interchange is the number-one problem in Eagle River. And if you see project number eleven, that's number eleven. Number ten is actually the number-one, the number-one high-priority project. Projects number seven and eight would work in tandem. They would provide a new aligned connection between Farm Avenue and Eagle River Loop Road, and a partial interchange with the Glen Highway carrying some of that traffic down into Anchorage, and it would also be an off-ramp for people coming into Farm Avenue. Close on the heels of those recommendations are two new intersections that are signalized along the Old Glen Highway. They are projects five N and five S. The public's really on board with those. As we get away from the Glen Highway with this round of public involvement, people seem to be less eager to have their homes and residences impacted with increased neighborhood connectivity. So the public, the issue response summary addresses all the comments that we received from the third public meeting and from the public review period. And I wanted to make sure that everybody at least felt that their voice was heard. And what we're asking the commission to do is to hear from the people and then to make a recommendation to the AMAT's Policy Committee to recommend the recommendations in the plan for consideration and inclusion in the long-range transportation plan update that is due in two thousand eleven. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. One question I have, is there a representative here this evening from the folks that you had prepare this? Is there somebody here from Kittleson and Associates?
Yes, sir. Gary Katzen is here. He's a principal with Kittleson and Associates. I should say he's here on his own time. He's here, not, he's not being paid by the contract to be here.
Okay, but he is available to answer any questions that we may have?
I have to let him answer that.
All right. Okay, before we get into questions from the members of the commission to staff, there's something that we all need to understand on the commission, is that we're not sitting and dealing with this as the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're actually serving as the AMAT Citizens Advisory Committee, which is different than the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're not making any decisions tonight on land use or anything of that nature. We're basically looking at a study that's been prepared, and our recommendations will basically be if we want to see any changes to the study, and then the study will be forwarded back to AMAT's, and AMAT's will then give it to the Assembly, so they can provide their input, and then again, it'll go back to the AMAT's for their action. And we sit as the Citizens Advisory Committee as a result of an agreement that was put together between AMAT's and the city, and it basically states specifically that we serve in that capacity. The last time we sat doing something like this was when we dealt with the Kinnick Arm Bridge. So that's sort of the situation that the commission is in tonight. So now we'll go ahead and open up any questions, first of all, that the commission may have of staff. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, just really quickly. I wanted to, Ms. Underwood, to clarify that this doesn't necessarily set in concrete some of these alignments. This is a study, is that correct? And in some cases, the alignments are still general. The concept is there, but not the alignment, and certainly not the design?
Yes, absolutely. We've heard comments, people are very concerned that this line goes through my house, and I just want to, that's a good point. These are just concepts at this point. A road connection might actually skirt an entire subdivision that it looks like it goes through right now. But that has to be decided at the next phase. We're planning to have a follow-on phase to look at each of these projects more closely and to see exactly what the alignment, closer what the alignment would be and what the impacts would be.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, is the intent of this study to be, is it the intent to be incorporated, these recommendations to be incorporated in the long-range transportation plan for Eagle River? Is that what's happening here, that you're using this study as a basis for change in the long-range transportation plan?
Right.
And the same for the Transportation Improvement Program?
Yes.
So ultimately, this is going to result, at least in certain cases, amendment to the long-range transportation plan?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the long-range transportation plan to see how many changes would actually occur if this study were to be adopted?
Well, that has to happen, what we're asking is that these projects be considered for inclusion in the long-range transportation plan, not that they be put, it may be that they say the top six projects wind up going into the LRTP, but that has to be, that's another exercise that staff has to do with our consultant when we prepare the next long-range transportation plan.
So in terms of what you're asking us to do, you're asking us to adopt this plan as the basis for what?
I'm just asking for your recommendation for these, for the study recommendations to be considered for inclusion in the long-range transportation plan update.
So can you describe to me which of these exhibits in the plan actually represent the recommended strategy? I'm looking at Figure ten and Figure eight. Were those a big representative?
The, it's pages, pages thirty-nine to forty-two.
Yeah, those are the actual projects. I was hoping you'd see a map that represented them, however.
You're right. Figure twelve is the map, and it's on page seventy-three of your packet.
Okay, so Figure twelve, then, is the, are the recommendations in a spatial fashion that are now, are contained in more detail?
Yes.
In the back of the plan. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Through the chair. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's an important piece of transportation work, and certainly I can testify to the fact that the Old Glen Highway is a very congested area, and that Eagle River itself is one of the main population growth areas for residential development. I think I have four recommendations for consideration when these studies are undertaken, and the first one has to do with identifying where the population statistics come from. And other than Iser- and other than ICER, I personally would like to know what the date of the latest study is, and a little bit more about the population that, and the population growth that will ultimately justify some of this work. And I think a couple of more paragraphs in the report would be very beneficial in that regard. Secondly, I am disappointed, as we discussed in the work session, by that the fact that there were not more stakeholders actually contacted. I appreciate the tremendous amount of public outreach work that was done, but there are major landowners in the Eagle River area that I think it would have been beneficial to have some impact, to have some conversation with. Number three, I think the plans, we have a lot of very nice graphics here, but I think it would be very helpful if the proposed plans could be overlaid on plaits, actual plaits, that show the impact on businesses and housing in the area. In other words, not just a graphic like what you have up on the board, but a lot of decisions are going to be made based upon the businesses and the housing that's going to be impacted. And I recognize that what I am suggesting has not, was not necessarily the direction that was given to the consultant for the study, but I would ask the Planning Department, take these recommendations into consideration, and AMATS does, for future planning purposes. And finally, I would like to have identified, what are the components that make up the cost estimates? In our work session, Commissioner Pruse had a very good point that, generally speaking, if you put a number down, you have, you identify what that number consists of. And I would like to see that in future plans, not just coming out of AMATS, but in general for the Planning Department to take into consideration. Thank you.
Any more comments from the Commissioners? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing now. When you come forward, please state your name and indicate whether you're representing yourself or a group, and then we'll start the timer, and then, when the light goes red, we drag you off the stage. So, please cooperate.
I'll be first. Greg Terry, Mercy Drive, Eagle River. I do not believe that an adequate outreach has been done in terms of consulting all the people that could be very directly impacted by this study. I'm fairly active in the community, and it was only by someone else telling me that the last draft, presentation of the draft was available to attend. And this meeting, the only way I found out about it was through the local weekly paper. So, that's the first point, that I don't think that it's adequately represented in terms of, they did a good job of it, but there's a lot of people that would be here even at this stage if they knew that it was even being considered for their area. So, I would oppose, and staff said unanimously, absolutely opposed to doing nothing. I'm not absolutely opposed to doing nothing, and that we have to get the traffic off the Old Glen. Those are assumptions that are made that may be true to a certain degree, but they aren't valid for me. And so, as I look at the plan, I would say, take care of the intersections with the Old Glen, that you can do so with minimal cost and minimal impact on businesses and residences. And then, leave the rest alone. Do not destroy residential areas by doing connect connectivity, and, you know, people are there because it's a residential area, and they knew going into it what access and interests were going to be. And then specifically, Snowmobile Lane and Iris, that's, you know, that's in my backyard. And there was an agreement made when that was rezoned to close off Iris, and for the connectivity of additional businesses in there, they went up in Iris, and it's my contention that that rezoning should go back to the original zoning, and then those businesses would be in non-compliance, and they couldn't operate. Because that was the agreement, and I didn't even go over here because it was a, the rezoning included the closing of Iris, and there was an evidence related to that. I got done before the red light came on.
Are there any questions for Mr. Terry? Thank you, sir. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Please, yeah, Ms. first.
Just one question, are you a residential owner, or do you own a business in that area?
Well, there's two things. One is I'm a residential, and man, before I came down here tonight, I was asked if I could say anything as far as the impact of San Maria and wanting to move on the intersection, but I didn't address that. So, residential for, since 1988.
Thank you.
Just to say, I think we have some other questions. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the Chair. Since the Speaker doesn't have the map we do right in front of us, could Ms. Underwood tell us which project refers to the connectivity of Snowmobile Lane and Iris?
The number...
Through the Chair, that would be number two, project number two.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Yes, go ahead, Chair.
Yes, sir. Thanks for taking the time to come tonight, and I'm glad you did hear about it. Without taking any position on this at this point, being new to the Commission tonight, my first meeting, I'm going to ask a very general question, and a couple of general questions. One, one is, what is, if, we are told in the, in the report and in the projections for demand and traffic congestion into the future, up to 2035, that it's going to get pretty bad. What, and you're, as I understand it, you were testifying that you would like it to be just basically left alone with a few changes at certain intersections, is that correct, sir?
Well, I'm saying that there are people out there that didn't have a voice that would say, leave it alone, it's not broke. I'm saying that I can see that there's areas on the Old Glen in terms of connectivity and provision to make things safer and stuff that could be addressed. The other thing I would mention is that the study is predicated on the congestion hours, which are limits at the commute hours, around 8 o'clock and 5 o'clock. So, there's whatever number of hours, whatever study you look at in the rest of the day, that it's not a problem. And I've lived there, like I said, since 88. I've seen the problem get worse, but it's livable. I'd much rather wait or turn right rather than try and turn left and have my residential area maintained as a residential area and not connectivity, if that answers your question, sir.
That gets on it. The other, to take a little step further, let's project ourselves forward a number of years, maybe a couple of decades, and let's assume that the traffic projections are correct or close. So, maybe your traffic trying to get through the existing roadway is going to be greatly increased. Do you feel that that is a good thing to plan for, or is it, would you recommend waiting until a later time to start working on that potential problem? What if the worst happens? What should the municipality do?
I still believe that the integrity of the residential areas that people have purchased property, and I just heard tonight of a person that sold their house because they didn't want a possibility of fighting this, you know, winning if it comes up. So, something that maintains the integrity of the residential areas as they were developed, and maybe no left turns on the Old Glen. You know, there's going to be some inconvenience. Again, I would say, I would accept some inconvenience over this overall plan that impacts so many people. And I know it's a general concept, and it's not specific, so again, some alignment, but as far as where the right-of-ways would go, so I'm at the, I'm kind of of the opinion that to go slow, and, you know, we're going to put up with some stuff, and it, you know, there may be other options that, you know, public transportation hasn't been looked at in terms of how that would impact this, and different things like that. Because it's at the commute hours that the problem is occurring, as I understand it.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Mr. Terry? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just before we start on the next person, please, Commissioners, please use your machines so I can catch you when you want to speak, because I'm staring at the screen, and I don't have really good peripheral vision all the way out to the far corners. All you gotta do is push that little thing that says Request to Speak, and your name pops up on my screen. Okay, go ahead, Chair.
My name is Chuck Holman. I live in the house that I built in 1983 at 12741 Iris Way, and I, actually, all three plans directly impact my home. And I urge you to reject this plan and explore different alternatives. There are better solutions that need to be explored. The study did accomplish what they were set out to do. In your packet, it says, while you're from the chamber, first and foremost, the goal needs to be to increase connectivity in order to take the pressure off the Old Glen Highway. Well, where is that traffic going? It's going to go in front of my house, in front of your house, in front of residential neighborhoods. It's, and that's not where the commercial traffic belongs. It belongs on streets designed to handle that traffic and not shifted onto the residential. Staff said, with strategy results, in impacts residential areas that are perceived to have the least negative impacts in residential areas. Why do we need to have negative impacts to the residential areas? There are a number of solutions to the problem, and I don't see it as a problem, really, but there's a number of solutions to better the traffic flow. And I attended the chamber meeting and asked these questions. Snowmobile Drive, did you explore connecting that to the Glen Highway off-ramp, and that could be done between CNC Skidoo and Polaris? That was not explored in the study. That would solve their problem. Did you explore frontage road? The Seward Highway has frontage roads on both sides. They did not explore a frontage road. I asked that question at the chamber meeting. That was not included in the study. That would solve a lot of the traffic problem. Extending Eagle River Loop Road near Skyline Drive all the way to north Eagle River exit, that's a major road, but that would solve the problem of the traffic at Eagle River Loop and the Old Glen Highway. That was not explored. They said, well, we extended the street, one of the streets on through a residential neighborhood to it. And that's not appropriate to extend these, put commercial traffic on residential neighborhoods. There are many solutions to the problems that, you know, Mr. Russell was asking the questions here. There are many, many other solutions that have not been included in the study, because I don't believe the consultant was asked to look at these other solutions. So, all three alternatives impact my home. I don't want to live on a home like Otis, between Northern Lights and East 15th, where you back out into traffic. That's unacceptable. And the other two alternatives puts the road in my backyard and across what I would call Shorter Pond, we'd have to fill that pond in, which then in turn would flood my lot and my neighbor's lot. And I don't think that's very practical solution. When you look at, like Ms. Yashimura said, that they look at, you can draw pictures on a plat, map here like this, but when you actually look at the topography out there, staff talks about this, that some of this is not very feasible.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Ms. Yashimura?
Thank you, Mr. Holman, for your testimony. You've lived in the Eagle River area for a very long time. There obviously is congestion on the Old Glen Highway, and it is going to get worse. Do you have any comments or suggestions about the improvement of the Old Glen Highway?
I, let me say, I think a frontage road could be explored, that way, like Farm Avenue is probably good idea, but then bring to a frontage road, have a frontage from south Eagle River exit to north Eagle River exit, connect business flow to that frontage road, and then keeping that commercial traffic on proper streets.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Holman? Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Mark Mall. I've lived in the Chuyac Eagle River area since 1982, currently live at mile three of Eagle River Road. I am quite supportive of the study as proposed. I think it gives a lot of options for further consideration in the future. There are several issues here that I'm considering, and the most important one, I think, is certainly the access on the south Eagle River interchange. That is a very, very difficult intersection, to say the least, and I think that the study has drawn that out. And I would assert that that is a problem today, and it's a very real problem, not just at the rush hours, but also during the day, just crossing Artillery Road, that bridge. If you have to turn right onto Eagle River Road, you have traffic that's merging off the Glen Highway, and lots of them are going straight into Eagle River, and that is a, that is a very big problem, and it's more than just access, it's a huge safety issue that needs to be addressed. I was very pleased to see that all the proposals seem to be taking that into account. So, again, just to summarize, I am very supportive of the studies, and I'm supportive of the process, too, because I know that the, this is, this is not the final, final solution, that if this plan goes forward as proposed, that there will be further, further research and further studies to actually find the best route to accommodate the existing businesses and homeowners. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Mall and the Commission? Thank you for your testimony, sir.
My name is Mark Ballness. Been a resident of Eagle River for five years now. We just moved up in '05. And just in that five years, I've noticed a significant increase in the amount of traffic up and down the Old Glen, and that's just five years. My biggest concern with all of this has been the area in the 10 and 11, on the improvements, the priorities here, is that artillery road intersection, like Mr. Mall was saying. It's dangerous. It is just absolutely dangerous trying to make that right-hand turn onto Eagle River Road, especially at rush hour. It's an accident looking for a place to happen, absolutely. And I've looked through all of these proposals, any one of the three would work, and it has my full support, and I hope it has yours.
Any questions for Mr. Ballness? Thank you, sir. Mr. Ballness, could you spell your last name, please? We gotta get it on the record here. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Kay Loughlin. I've been a resident of Eagle River since 1990.
Could you pull the mic down a little so we can hear you better? Don't be afraid of it. There you go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kay Loughlin. Been Eagle River resident since 1990. The Artillery Road is as bad as Mr. Merrill has said, and actually, worse, it's terrible. I almost want to close my eyes and just go for it. I suggest that there be a combination of what Mr. Merrill and Mr. Holman said, that's revising the artillery road dramatically and incorporating frontage roads. That's it.
That's okay. Any questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
Hi, Kate. I was wondering if, Mr. Chairman, through you, I could ask the staff a question? Is there...
Yes, you may ask.
Is there an opportunity... Is there an opportunity, is there enough room there for a frontage roads?
I believe we asked that question, and I don't think there is room for, for, but what, but what we could do is create a tighter diamond interchange.
What's that?
Well, it's a typical, uh, like this, rather than loops, rather than loops. There may be some options, but I, we did ask DOT about possible frontage roads, and they said there just isn't enough right-of-way there to do that.
You'd have to have it on both, uh, both sides of the street in order to access the businesses on each side?
Well, I, we defer, I deferred to them. I mean, they're, they're-
Are they here tonight?
No, unfortunately.
Um, I have another question. If there's not room for a frontage road, how would there be enough room to increase the lanes of a highway?
Is that directed to staff? Ms. Underwood?
I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have to answer that question tonight, but I could, I could ask for you. Um, excuse me just a minute. Could we, could I defer to Mr. Katsion to answer that question with Kittleson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, if you'd come forward and state your name for the record, please.
May I go back?
You can just scoot over here. You may get a chance to talk again. You can just stand on the front seats.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gary Katsion. It's spelled K-A-T-S-I-O-N. I'm the office manager and senior principal with Kittleson and Associates here in Anchorage. And I believe the question was, was there enough room in the State Glen Highway right-of-way to put in the additional six lanes, which is under the current transportation plan? This section of Glen Highway is to be expanded to six lanes. And then was there enough room within the existing right-of-way to add frontage roads on both sides to serve the area instead of making other improvements within the community? Is that the correct question?
Uh, no. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, I think it isn't, but let me make sure I'm clear. The current proposal is for a six-lane Old Glen?
No, for the new Glen Highway.
Oh.
The, the, the actual expressway, it's to be expanded to six lanes. It's currently two lanes in each direction right now. And it was my understanding that the question was the frontage road would be in that right-of-way. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what the questioner had in mind. Was it along the new, uh, Glen Highway, frontage road?
I'm sorry, I asked, if there's not enough room for a frontage, frontage road, how could there be room for three more lanes? I think I understand because it's different rights-of-way, based on what you're saying.
By, I'm, I'm, before I answer, I want to make sure I understand the question that I'm trying to answer.
Yeah. What I'm asking, if there's not enough room for a frontage road, how could there be enough room for three more lanes?
Are you talking about the old Glen or the new Glen?
New Glen.
New Glen.
Okay, New Glen.
I'm sorry, frontage road of the new-
On the new Glen, okay. That's what we're talking about. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That scenario, that option was discussed as part of this project. There is, the, from my understanding from the DOT, the response was there was not enough existing right-of-way to put in one additional lane in each direction to make it a six-lane highway and then also put in adequate frontage road on both sides to serve adjoining properties. So in order to put in a frontage road, they would have to buy additional right-of-way, which on the east side of the highway would take out an awful lot of houses to do that.
Okay, but, but you, that's only if you put frontage roads on both sides. The implication there is you could put frontage road on one side, but not on the other, and you could still have six lanes.
I don't know if that was actually looked at with the frontage road on one side. A frontage road system, since you have properties on both sides, you would need to serve both sides. And so typically, a frontage road would be on both sides because you need a way to get back in the other direction.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Phelps?
I have a question for the-
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Katsion, I sent you way too soon.
Looking at the study, um, I'm used to seeing traffic counts. And then, and then I see where the, the, you have a cost associated with the, with the different phasing and priority. But I don't see any place where, uh, based on the priority, what, how it alleviates the existing conditions. There's no baseline. For instance, I, you know, you, there's a, apparently a traffic issue, but with, with all the different options and scenarios, I don't see where it shows me what I, what I get for my money, so to speak, based on the options and how, what percentage of the problem it alleviates or whatnot. Is that a possibility? Is, is my question?
Well, the report did show what the difference is between what we called a no-plan. It wasn't a no-build plan. It was a no-plan, which meant it was an ad hoc way that currently gets, uh, issues addressed. And so it wasn't that there wouldn't be anything done to the system, but you would go, what typically the DOT does now is, safety is their highest priority. So you address safety issues first. And under that no-plan, basically an ad hoc way to address the future traffic issues, was that Old Glen Highway would need to be seven lanes. And what happens in that seven-lane feature is that you would also need to put in medians and other things so that you would, uh, limit movements onto and off of that, off of the Old Glen Highway to handle those future traffic projections. And when we presented that to the community, they basically said, that's not acceptable. They had, when Old Glen Highway was originally widened to five lanes, they had medians in there and they were asked to pull them out because the community didn't want them. And so if you don't make these other connections to the community, as the community grows, the only way to make sure traffic is moving along the Old Glen Highway is to make that as efficient as possible. And the way to make that as efficient as possible is to put in medians, to limit driveways so that existing businesses would have less access than they have today. And again, when we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we talked to the community about that. That was not what they wanted. They wanted to be able to maintain access to businesses, maintain, maintain access into community, into the residential areas.
Okay, I, for, well, for, by example, if we, if we were to spend up to $10 million on number 10, high priority, on the Old Glen, what is your projection of, of how much traffic does that relieve off the Old Glen when you do that? Based on existing conditions or future?
We didn't look at the individual impacts of any given one project. What this was, was building a, a foundation for a long-range solution to the, for the community. And the reason we put the higher priority ones is, was to start being able to move traffic off of the Old Glen Highway, to get it off the Glen, Old Glen Highway sooner than later.
But to, but to prioritize it, you had to make some assumption-
Right.
And what, what benefit it was going to do, based on, is it based on safety, volume? That's, that's what my confusion is. I, I'm trying to look for the benefit based on priority.
Right. The, the benefit for number 10 was to get traffic into the business district area along, um, um, Business Boulevard sooner than later, to get it off of the Old Glen Highway sooner. The traffic didn't want to be on Old Glen Highway. The traffic wanted to get into the business district, and so we got them in there as soon as we possibly could. That, that then relieved other intersections along the Old Glen Highway. That was the benefit for, and one of the reasons why number 10 served as one of the higher priority projects.
So with, so with number 10, when, when, if that was to be, uh, constructed, permitted?
And, and, and one, one other element of number 10 was that it allowed traffic that was coming from basically the valley and the community, coming up, um, Eagle River Road, that they didn't have to turn onto Old Glen Highway to get into the business district. They could go straight across that intersection versus making two turns. They'd have to make a right turn on the Old Glen and then another left turn into the business district at some other point. And so that allowed, that was much more efficient to get them straight across versus having them make two turns. So number 10 solved a lot of different issues.
And, and, and what, what, what is your position on what the impact is to the local residents of number 10? What, what volume of traffic would you tell them if you built it would go, would use it?
Um, I'd have to look at the exact numbers and stuff. We do have numbers. I don't have them all on the, off the top of my head.
I, I think that would be very valuable based on, on that. And that's my point. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sir. Uh, you'll probably get a chance to come up numerous times, so, so just, uh, you may want to just take a seat close by here and we'll let public testimony continue. Okay, anybody else wish to testify?
Hi, my name is Matt Hickey and I'm a business owner and a resident of Eagle River. And I've been here since 1989. And I, um, my job requires me to be driving a lot near the river. I do a lot of driving. And, uh, one thing I want to mention, I can't, oh my, ran out of pamphlets. I'm not sure what number, the first off-ramp, is that number 10 or? That's 11 glasses. Anyway, um, I just want to say I'm, I'm getting off that ramp a lot. And I've probably been rear-ended, almost rear-ended, just tons of times over the years. Because what happens is it's kind of a sharp, uh, off-ramp and it backs up really quick to the highway itself. So what you have to do is you have to actually get in the right lane if you don't want to get rear-ended. And then once you're in the right lane, you're kind of stuck because now you've got to make a right onto the, uh, Eagle Road. You can't even get back in the left lane, see, and go through town. So that's a major, major hazard right there, getting off that ramp. And I just want to, I just hope you guys do something about this because it's getting really bad on that off-ramp. And, uh, I know there's been a lot of talk about it over the years and that's all we're hearing, just talk. Kind of getting tired of it. You know, it's, it's something needs to happen, so that's all I want to say about that.
Can you stay just a second? Any questions from Members of the Commission? Thank you, sir. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Eric Wright, W R I G H T. Uh, and I live, um, back in the Hopkins Village neighborhood. Uh, one of the reasons that we moved into that neighborhood was because, I've only lived here for a year and a half. And one of the reasons we moved into that neighborhood was because of the congestion downtown. Uh, when we were up shopping for houses, we were here, um, during rush hour and just trying to get off the highway was a nightmare. And I didn't want to live in this area downtown. But we really liked the Eagle River area. We really liked the people and, and the businesses and so on. So focusing to me on this artillery road area, which seems to be a hotspot, uh, is, is key, I think, to, to moving this plan along. And, and I know that there will be people affected by this, one, one way or another. And I know that, uh, as we move along, and, and this is just a plan to move forward and so to take some steps forward and that when it actually gets to, you know, moving the plan forward, that, you know, they'll make as minimal impact to people's property and people who've lived here for a long time. So, uh, just want to put that forward and that, you know, we, we support this plan because we're a lot, we will, we will be long-term Eagle River residents. Thank you.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Wright? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kalisha Henry. Um, I've been a resident of Eagle River since 1980 and currently bought my own home, um, recently off Farm Road, home one of the streets off Farm Road. And my question is, um, in terms of property value, if there's going to be an off-ramp connecting Farm Road to the, um, Glen Highway, has, have the property values been looked at and how that would be affecting it, um, in terms of resale value or different things? Is there a way to look that up? Has that been projected at all? Um, as well as personally, I know everyone going down Farm Road area right now is more local traffic. It's not business traffic. And yet with that off-ramp, though I realize it will relieve some of the congestion, um, it's going to add a lot of non-local traffic. So people who don't really have a stake in the neighborhoods back there, um, I know my neighbor across the street just got graffiti'd last night. Again, more than likely, traffic that wasn't due or wasn't local people living there. Um, that's going to increase the people coming through that neighborhood quite a bit. And I'm wondering, uh, personally, I'd like to say, you know, that is kind of negative in my mind in terms of it wasn't a projection when I bought my house and yet now it is. But I would like to know, is there a place to look up projections for how this would affect the cost of, or the homes in that area off Farm Road? And I don't know if that's a question for you.
Direct that to staff.
Through the chair, that is something that could be looked at when we do the next round of, of, um, analysis. But I would like to say that Farm Avenue is a collector on the Official Streets and Highways Plan map. And ever since even 1996, we, the Long Range Transportation Plan for that area has, uh, talked about trying to make a better connection between Powder Reserve and downtown. And Farm Avenue has been seen as one way of doing that. You are right. It would, it would draw more traffic. Probably with, with the interchange by 2035, there might be an additional 6,000 cars. Without the interchange, there might be an additional 1,000 or 2,000. Right now, there are, there's just slightly over 2,000 vehicles per day. I know that's a concern. It's something that would have to be looked at, though. This was really an underfunded project. All we were able to do was get to the first base with this project. And hopefully, we'll be able to fund a follow-on study that could take all those things into account, including environmental impacts and, and impacts to residences.
So that's not available to look at yet, though?
No.
Okay.
No. Um, I, I would like to say, though, that we have had support from, I, no, I don't want to take time away. It's your time to talk.
Thanks, that was my question. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Yoshimura?
Um, I don't believe that there is any statistical data, um, locally that addresses the issue that you have. However, I can tell you that generally speaking, from a planning perspective, major arterials and collectors, um, generally have more rental income, uh, type of properties surrounding them because of the transportation benefits as opposed to single-family homeownership. You're welcome.
Any further questions for Ms. Henry? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to testify? Don't be embarrassed if you want to testify, because I'll close this thing and then you can't, so.
Good evening. My name's Alden. I'm an Eagle River resident since, uh, 1992. And I just want to concur with the, uh, reports that Project Number 11 is a high priority item. I use that intersection daily and it's very dangerous. So, uh, just want to concur with the, uh, the findings on this thing that, uh, Project 11 would be a high priority item for this Commission.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify? Anybody else wish to testify? Last call. Does anybody else wish to testify? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Phelps? Um, I would ask staff to turn-
I would ask staff to turn to page 22 of the study, under the section Public Feedback. That's in the lower portion of that page. And the question I'm getting to here is, what exactly are we approving, when we approve this document? And the first paragraph tells me, when I read it, that there was not a strong consensus on the part, at the participants in the process, as to one solution over another. That's what it says here. And then the second paragraph basically says that it is assigned by the project team that the remainder of the study efforts be directed toward the development implementation of features common to the solution strategies instead of prematurely pushing for community consensus around one of the solution strategies. So, it seems that what staff is recommending is a conceptual approach to the way that transportation improvements may be developed in this area, but subject to additional refinement based upon demographic information, land use analysis, and right-of-way considerations and costs. Am I getting, am I close here?
Mr. Phelps, could you please tell me what page you were on again?
Okay. Let's see, I'll find it myself, too.
Are you looking?
It's page 22.
Are you looking at the PDF packet for tonight or just the?
No. It's what came, it's not the thing you handed out this evening.
So, you're not looking at the whole PDF packet, just the document?
I'm just looking at the document, yes. It says Public Review Draft, so that to me means it's a public review draft.
Well, the public review draft is part of the packet, so it's been paginated separately.
It should be the page before figure eight. Page before figure eight.
Ah, thank you. So it's page 67 of the packet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm on your page. Sorry.
So what I'm trying to determine here is, what exactly is this plan attempting to represent? What it says in the first paragraph under the, where it says Public Feedback, paragraph under Public Feedback, is that the technical people that were doing the work on the study found that as a result of public review, there was not a consensus, a strong consensus that emerged in terms of particular approach. That's what that paragraph says there. It then goes on to say that apparently, a technical group, apparently a project team, then recommended that the study be developed to identify what they would describe as being common features of the various alternatives. And so, when I think about this, and I'm turning to page, now, there's no page number on it, but it's Figure 10, and says composite by solution strategies. So, I'm going to say it's following page 25. So if you do, if you go to the page following page 25, there is a Figure 10. And so, what this is telling me is that what the plan is recommending is an identification of transportation needs in this area, and specifically, it's basically signaling that there is consensus around certain areas of common concern. So, is, this is what's happening here? I mean, are we identifying specific projects or are we identifying a conceptual approach to how we actually develop transportation improvement projects in this area? And the reason I'm concerned is because I'm a little bit concerned about identifying specific projects right now when I know they haven't gone through all the reviews typically you have to go through. Typically, a study like this would be used as input to the revision of the Long Range Transportation Plan.
That's exactly what we're asking for. That's exactly what we want to do.
Thank you.
This plan is supposed to be, it's not a plan, it's a study. It's trying to get an overall, long-range plan of a list of projects that we could start working at from 1 through 20 to start seeing some benefit, to start seeing some, and the projects have been prioritized according to criteria that were developed that are true to the guiding principles.
The problem, the problem I see is that this is not a plan per se. It doesn't actually represent municipal policy as to how the municipality is going to be developing transportation projects. What it is, is a study that identifies certain problems and identifies a public response to those problems. And as such, it provides a basis for future development of transportation projects in the Long Range Transportation Plan. But I don't see this as being a document that says these are the recommended projects in the Long Range Transportation Plan.
If you look at, it does say that in, this is, there's an implementation plan. If you look on page 40, it says, "A reasonable and feasible implementation plan has been developed to accomplish the 21 common features. Completion of these projects does not dictate the need for a change in street classification," and it goes on to talk about that. But the common features summarized in Table 6 is the implementation plan.
Okay, what are you saying, what are you reading from page 40?
Page 40 is the last paragraph.
Okay.
What Debbie Osiander wanted from this project was to have an overall plan of actionable projects that could be developed more freely later, that we have to get funding to do that. But in order to look at them more closely, we have to, those projects have to be in the Long Range Transit, they have to be in a plan somewhere for us to be able to go to funding agencies and request money to look at them more closely. So that's what we wanted to do, was to get this, this work acknowledged to this point so that we could take a look at these more closely, especially, especially the higher priority projects.
So when you say, "Look at them more closely," what I'm hearing is that you need to include these projects on the Long Range Transportation Plan in order for you to access, the municipality to access into funds for further evaluation of these projects?
Yes, and to do the preliminary engineering and design work.
And so, when you say composite strategies, and again, I'm looking at Figure 12, basically what you're doing with these areas that are identified on this map, are you identifying those strategies that seem to have the greatest feasibility and the greatest need inside the Eagle River area?
Yes, and the fact that these, the fact that these are common to all three overall strategies. In other words, these could be seen as more near-term projects, except for one project, except for one project that is number three. This actually is solution strategy number one. It's essentially solution strategy number one, the connected streets. Without having gotten that from the public, that's what it is.
Ms. Underwood? I have a question. So, what you're really saying is if you, if we look at Figure 12 and we build all of those connectors and stuff, except for number three, those would satisfy option one, two, or three? In other words, they'd all go into any of those three options?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're not imposing any of those three options, we're just sending this thing forward as a study that says, "Look, we've identified these projects, we've identified these options, now let's develop something more."
Exactly.
And you, the reason we have to do this is because if they're not listed in an AMAT's priority, we're never going to get any money from anybody.
Right.
Okay, so this is an administrative exercise to tap the feds and tap the state for money. Okay, I accept that. Anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay. Well, we need, I would say, a positive motion to move this thing forward. And if we want to make any amendments to that positive motion to change stuff, we can. So, looks like we've got, Ms. Pease, motion approved, do we have a second? Mr. Phelps? Okay, Ms. Pease, would you please?
In the matter of case 2010-129, I move for approval of the AMAT, of the study submitted to us, the public review draft of the Eagle River Central Business District and Residential Core Circulation Study. I suggest that we make the following changes as part of this resolution, and then I'll be open to other changes from other commissioners as part of this motion. I recommend that we make sure that the language found on page four and five of our staff packet is included, specifically the sentences found at the bottom of both of those pages, which I'll read. "The common features," these would be the ones in Figure 12 on page 73, "could be considered as the consultant's shorter-term recommended strategy without precluding a decision for any one of the three solution strategies at some point in the future." And then from page five, "The report does not make any recommendation for one-way couplets. A decision by the community to opt for a one-way couplet, as shown in solution strategy two or three, would need to be a community-based decision." Second change I would propose is to make sure that the text on interdependence and timing for some of these projects, which is found on page 81 of our packet, is in the report. And I would like to suggest that staff should further modify this, these findings, to make clear that some of these projects result in spillover traffic effects. In particular, projects such as seven and eight, which occur at either ends of Farm Avenue, certainly have spillover effect on the Farm Avenue segment in the middle. So some of these projects should probably be recommended to be built and scoped out and built a little more broadly, and several pieces should be recommended simultaneous, for simultaneous improvement. The third change I recommend, from page 72, there's an illustration that shows possible cross-section of collectors. It shows that on-street parking could be optional. I'd like to suggest that the study add text to explain the pros and cons of providing that parking, including the public cost if this is not fee parking, and the impacts of non-fee parking versus transit in the efforts to have a pedestrian-oriented central business district. Fourth, following up on Commissioner Prue's suggestion, I'd like to suggest that the report include on maps the changes in traffic counts and the out-years of the study so that we can, we in the public can see the effects of various specific projects on the traffic conditions. Five, ensure that the specific concerns stated by the public tonight regarding the artillery road exit and entrance on the New Glen Highway are represented. And six, consult with Department of Transportation and clarify in the text whether any partial frontage roads on the New Glen Highway are possible and would serve what seems to be the public's interest in minimizing the amount of commercial traffic going through neighborhoods.
Mr. Phelps, it looks like you want to say something.
Um, I am actually reluctant to vote this evening. It's not that I object to their statements, it's that they're so definitive and so detailed that I'm not sure I understand them all. And so what I'd like to have is, if, if this is going to go forward, no, I'll say it differently. What I'd like to have is for the action to be, I guess, postponed until we have that wording so we can take a look at it. Because frankly, some of the stuff was just handed out, and I couldn't follow it all. And so I need to have some additional time to see what's actually occurring here. And I do have some concern about what we're actually saying in terms of wording, in terms of implementation of this plan, and I need to have the opportunity to review it in sufficient
I see some nodding of heads. Ms. Pease, could we perhaps modify your motion to send this stuff back to be finalized and then brought before the commission at a later date? I don't know, I doubt if it'll be this month. I would suspect it'll be in January, it'll probably take you a month to get it sorted Ms. Underwood, if we were to hand this back to you, punt it, so to speak, and you were to add these things that Ms. Pease discussed, I mean, is it realistic to expect it back next week or is it realistic to expect it in January?
Well, first of all, you, Mr. Chair, you would not be expecting a revised document, right? We would just agree on the recommended changes.
What I'm asking, what I'm asking for is for someone to listen to the tape's carefully and basically identify what Ms. Pease said. I just can't carry all that information that was described. And so what I just need is the motion that Ms. Pease made to read it. That's all I need. And that's what is going forward.
Could we ask Ms. Pease to make that available to the rest of the commissioners this week?
I think if you were to, okay, Ms. Pease, go ahead.
Well, I've spoken into the record, so I guess we could ask Ms. Graves to email that to the other commissioners. And my understanding is that Ms. Underwood, she wouldn't try to produce the maps with the traffic counts, obviously, within a week. But it would just be some more clarity provided as to what kind of traffic count maps could be produced.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, Technical Memo Number 5 does have maps with traffic counts on them. They're not included in the final report, but they are available.
Let me restate this. I'm not asking for recommendations. What I'm asking for is a repetition of what Ms. Pease said so I have time to look at what the recommendation was. It basically means having the ministers transcribe for that particular area and providing those minutes in draft form to the commission members prior to the next meeting. That's all it means.
Yes, through the chair, I propose, before I propose to postpone, perhaps there are other commissioners' findings or recommendations that should also be put into print for the review of this commission when we take final action.
Any commissioners have any additional comments?
Yes. Well, you know, my concern is that I don't think there's an adequate bridge between this document and the Long Range Transportation Plan. And I need to get that sorted out. What this document is saying is that these are the improvements that need to be made, and that's a very strong statement. Because you haven't gone through the entire co-compliment and supply process that's associated with the Long Range Transportation element. And I'm reluctant at this point in time to approve a study that hasn't gone through a more detailed review. If the recommendation-
If the recommendation is that this is going to provide a basis in part for the development of or refinement of the longways transportation plan, wherein the projects identified in the study are to be investigated for more detail, I'm comfortable with that. But I'm not comfortable with the statement that this is the longways transportation plan by virtue of the inclusion of these recommendations. The two are dissimilar.
Mr. Wilson, I saw you wave your hand down there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question that relates to the Eagle River Central Business District Revitalization Plan, October 2003, in which it suggests that the primary goal of this plan, that plan, is to revitalize the urban, the urban core, the business core, and the immediate surrounding area. How, I guess my question is to staff is, can, can we get a, can they either walk us through how this plan implements that goal, or perhaps point us to the sections in the various documents we've been handed here that do walk us through?
Staff, comment on that, please.
Mr. Wilson, through the chair, is that something that you would like added to Ms. Pease, Ms. Pease's request?
I think it's relevant, because we, we're talking about a, a growing area, that's grown in a certain way, and now we're trying to restructure it, and now we're going to do a specific implementation plan that is going to change traffic patterns, is going to change the ratio between cars and pedestrians, it's going to do all kinds of things. It's going to impact neighborhoods and/or, as it tries to adjust to all of the challenges that lay before us. So I think it's very important for us to tie what we're, what we're commenting on here in this plan to the, the approved plan in 2003, to, how does it revitalize? Are there any things that we're doing here? I'm talking, not talking about every last detail, I'm talking about in general.
There are.
How does this revitalize the urban core?
And we take our, we take our guidance from the comprehensive plan for Eagle, for Chigayak Eagle River. And that plan identifies where the future growth is and is expected to be, for example, the corner of Eagle River Loop Road and the Old Glen Highway. That's addressed in the plan.
We've got a motion on the floor, and we need to deal with that. Why don't we, Ms. Pease, we'll deal with your motion first, then we'll come back, Mr. Wilson, and talk a little bit about this link-up between the two, this proposal and the Central Business District Revitalization, so...
Through the chair, I propose to postpone action on the motion that I made until the earliest time at which Ms. Underwood, excuse me, the earliest time at which Ms. Graves can produce the transcript of the motion that I have made. And I guess Ms. Underwood would need to tell us where those would occur, changes would occur in the text. And once the commission has a chance to get that printed out, then I move that we take action on this motion.
But right now, you're just asking us to postpone?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Yoshimura, I notice you're appearing as a move...
Mr. Chairman, that was going to be my motion. I accept Ms. Pease's motion.
Okay, you want to second it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that motion to postpone.
All right, so, so Ms...
And would like to add a friendly amendment to that. Well, first of all, let me ask this question. Are you out of funding? Do you have any money left in, in, for this project?
For this study? No, ma'am, we are, we've spent it all.
Well, that's not entirely true.
Okay.
What's left is, but it's spoken for. It's not spent, but it's, let's just say obligated.
Well, I'd like to speak for some of it. That'd be partially redirected. I think that it's very important that these plans should be overlaid on plaques showing business and housing. You just can't make a nice graphic and determine what the future of an area should be over the next 35 years without knowing what the impact is going to be on individual properties and property owners. And I think that is the most important thing. And then identifying from Table Five what these costs consist of. You know, we are asked, you know, I'm pleased to agree with Mr. Phelps in this regard, that, you know, we're asked here to recommend 24 different CIP projects. It is unrealistic to assume that any area, given our current economic conditions, are going to have 24 projects approved in the CIP. I think we need to pare it down and say, these are the five top priorities, or six, or whatever it is we're going to have. You know, I understand that there may be a fear in identifying those priorities, but certainly artillery road is, should be, the number-one priority. And I think everyone can agree with that. So, you know, it's a good first step, but I think that there's still a lot of work to be done before I can have any confidence in recommending this plan.
Okay, so what is your friendly amendment?
Well, all of the above.
Let's be specific, because Ms. Pease has to say yea or nay on friendly amendments, so...
Well, my amendment would be that the plans for all 24 of those improvements, proposed improvements, should be overlaid on plaques showing businesses and housing and their impact, and that this plan should identify what are the components of the cost estimates, what do they always consist of. And I'd be...
Ms. Pease, Ms. Pease, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Can I just say something? What you're asking is a difficult job. I've done this before. And what you, what you mean, what's going to be involved is you're going to have to take the right-of-way for each of those projects, overlay that, not plaques, but aerial photography, and go through the whole analysis in terms of structures affected, translate that into cost requirements. And that's been my concern about this, this document, is that we have, they have not done all those things. And they need to do those things before you can have really a realistic recommendation, right? We both agree, right? That's why I keep coming back to, this is not a definitive study, this is a step toward a recommendation. And the things that you're mentioning do have to be evaluated, it's just that this ain't the place. It's usually the place of the longways transportation plan to do that. But I agree thoroughly with the concept that it has to be evaluated before you can come to any sort of realistic conclusion.
Ms. Pease, you have the floor.
I, I support Ms. Yoshimura's desire for a cost check, but I think it's not what you normally would do at the concept stage. There are a couple of these projects, like 5N, where it's an either-or with San Juanita Loop, you can connect this one or that one. And we've also heard from the staff that, you know, some of these may detour around subdivisions, some may go through. So is there, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, is there a stage at which the cost reality check could happen that's not in this sort of conceptual study?
Please use your mic, please.
I can agree to perhaps eliminate that at this particular point in time. But I don't know how you can make a decision on 24 different projects without knowing what housing and businesses are going to be impacted. Now, it shouldn't be that difficult with Google or whatever it is, or all the, all the plaques are there. Just put the graphic over the plaque. How difficult can that be?
Well, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, we can't do that if we don't approve this. We can't do the next step if we can't even accept the, the basic premise that this is an idea that we want to explore.
You know, I think the conundrum in is that there needs to be further evaluation in order to come to a proper conclusion on this, and I don't think this study is going to provide that. And my concern has been that we're going to recommend this study as the basis for transportation improvements, and it's going to have a seal of approval from the Planning and Safety Commission, and they're going to say, see, they recommended it. And we don't really want that, I don't think. I think what we want is a statement that this provides a first step to a further evaluation of some areas where transportation deficiencies have been identified. I mean, that's appropriate for us to recommend, and so that copy-hots what we're recommending to very sniffing a degree. And that's what I'm concerned about, is that particular aspect.
Well, through the chair...
Mr. Prue.
Excuse me.
Just a second. Mr. Prue.
I think, I think looking at this, I think it's a, you know, it's a, they've done a lot with a little on this, on this, on this study. My recommendation would be to eliminate the level of importance, because if you eliminate the level of importance for all 24, you're, then you're, then you don't have to do the cost and justify any costs, you're not worried about the plaques or anything, it's just a recommendation for a further study. But once you put a level, you prioritize something, there's some assumptions going into that. And if I'm going to look at something and approve it or to pass along, I want to know what those assumptions are, because obviously someone made these, high, medium, and low, and they put a cost associated with that. So, so if this is a generic, if it's a report that goes forward to, for a further study, then I would suggest that the, the level of importance be removed.
Ms., I'd like to, go ahead and let Ms. Underwood speak, and then your turn. Ms. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I suppose what we could do is, you could make a recommendation that the follow-in study be included in the next revision to the Transportation Improvement Program. They include studies all the time, to do the next level of analysis.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
And I, but I should say that it isn't, the level, the, the level of importance is, is important to keep in there, though.
Ms. Pease.
I propose to, to vote on postponing action on the proposals I've made, and then can we have a second motion or proposal from the people who are concerned about the level of detail in this study? And that can be brought back at the same time as the changes I've proposed. But we don't have any language. We're hearing lots of good ideas from Ms. Yoshimura, Mr. Phelps, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Prue's. But if they could put in writing what they feel the level of detail in this study, they could put in detail what they feel the next steps are and the conclusions that are validated in this study, then we could vote on that, too. So I'm proposing to postpone mine.
Where do you want to draw it? No, that, no.
I want that language put to the scrutiny of the commission. So I'm proposing to vote on mine, but not close out the voting on this issue, but then have a second vote. Can we do that?
Just a second, let me check with the parliamentarian here.
Okay.
The motion to postpone, you just voted on the motion to postpone. The motion to postpone takes precedence over everything else. So let's go ahead and vote on this motion to postpone, then we can get back to the other things. So we got a motion to postpone, moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Ms. Yoshimura. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, that passes, so it's postponed. Now, let's, let's continue with the, with the discussion of ideas.
Well, what I would propose is, if I can get the language Ms. Pease has recommended, I will then take that in digital form, track changes, and mark it up and give it to Connie. And then she can take a look at it as well, because I think we're thinking the same thing, basically. And then, once we're both satisfied, the two of us, I'll just send it back to, I guess, the staff, and they can have it available for the meeting. And I presume that Connie and I can do that sometime early this week.
Okay, so the concept is that we get, Ms. Pease's data goes to all of us, we review, make comments, ship it to staff, they incorporate it.
It's a little bit different. It's that the, Ms. Underwood provides the co-commission with what Ms. Pease has recommended. She'll give it to us in digital form, and then I will take Ms. Pease's language, and I'll probably make modifications to that, and will then send that draft form to Ms. Yoshimura. And then she can take a look at it, she'll probably make some comments back to me, we'll then file it between the two of us, then we'll send that back to the planning department staff, so it'll be available at the next meeting.
Ms. Pease, you're scowling.
Well, well, I think Mr. Phelps and Ms. Yoshimura are talking about some issues that are somewhat tangential to my issues. So I'd like my language to come back to the commission with the addition separated of whatever you would like to come up with regarding the validity of the study and the, you know, the plat overlays and that sort of thing. Bring forward my language, bring forward your language, then let's go from there.
Well, what we're proposing is just to do track changes, and so you'd see your language there, the parts we would modify would be identified.
All right, that's fine.
We have postponed the commission.
Postpone.
And then Connie's going to examine, and then Mr. Phelps has questions and concerns, and they wanted additional information from business reviews, and what to vote. So anything that Mr. Phelps or Connie, you want to change, converge, and put together from there, and to multi-use this file?
We deal, we deal with it next week.
Which means they are two different.
Okay, the situation, the situation that we have is that we've postponed Ms. Pease's motion, which included four or five items, okay? Then we've got, Mr. Phelps and Ms. Yoshimura have something additional that they want to add to that at some point in time, and that will be done the next time we convene as a friendly amendment to the items that Ms. Pease has put together. Okay, so we got to, so we got to deal with this sequentially with Ms. Pease, and then you will prepare a friendly amendment to, to Ms. Pease's initial four, four or five proposals, and then we'll deal with that as either a friendly amendment, if not, we'll then vote it up or down to be included. And then we go back to her basic proposal.
We also are concerned whether my vision can get this stuff done.
Yeah.
And I'm going to have to look at this before I can fully let him, is it feasible? I mean, I can do it.
Yeah. Ms. Underwood, is this feasible to get this done in a week?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Pease is going to give her motion language to the rest of the commission.
That's correct.
And then other people are going to apply their friendly amendments to that language, and then you're going to give that to staff? Is that right?
We'll do this at the next meeting, where we will have this, this ready, and I, I would assume that as a group, we can then load it up or down.
Well, if staff is not involved, I think it's to...
It's doable. Okay, the only, the only question is the actual transcripts, and you can pull that out of wherever it is. Okay. Right.
Right.
Right. Well, the only reason we have to go to staff is because we have had it, have to have it distributed.
Yes.
That's the reason it goes to staff.
All right. So basically, then we postpone this until next meeting. All right, fine. We've kicked the can down the road. Okay, that takes care of that particular thing for this evening. If people are really curious, you can come back next week for this next installment. What we're going to do is take about a 10-minute break here, and we'll reconvene and... What we're going to do is take about a 10-minute break here, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. This is for the record. Reconvening, Planning and Zoning Committee, December 6th, case number three, 2010-132. Petitioners, Piero J. and Kathy DiMarzo rezoning to I-1 Light Industrial District. Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Francis McLaughlin. I'll be presenting the, the Planning Division's recommendation in regards to this rezone case. But first, there, during the break, there were some sheets of paper laid on the table in front of the commissioners, and I gave one to the petitioner also. This is not new information, this is information that's already in your packet, but it just seemed like with all the information you're receiving, it would be good to have things simplified and sort of blown up. And so, the first page is what we call a grid map. Planning staff has highlighted the lots that are subject to the rezone. To orient yourself, Toloff Street, you know, comes off of Abbott Road and goes north. The, the street, I guess the biggest street below it, that's 88th Avenue, and then the, the street south of the, the site, that's 86th Court. Anyway, so those are the four lots that are subject to the rezone. It looks like, this is a grid map, which we commonly use. It, it's sort of the compilation of all the plaques. So, it's just showing lot boundaries and rights of way, so it's just useful. It's worth noting that 86th Court is a substandard road, it's only 24-foot of dedicated right-of-way. That's 12-foot either side, the center, the center line. It's not a paved road, it's just a dirt road, there's potholes, it's, it's not a constructed road. Toloff, on the other hand, is a very nice road, it's been newly constructed, and it looks sort of oddly shaped, like it ends or something like that. It does not, it, it turns into a public use easement, and the public use easement, it just makes a little bit of a, an S-turn in that section. The next map is this zoning map. So, this is just a blow-up of a zoning map. This is the zoning map that we look at, planners at our desks, and I've highlighted again the, the subject property. You can see I-2 to the north, I-2 to the west, I-1 to the south, and then the R2M properties, the rest of the R2M properties in this, on this little block. The 1982 Generalized Land Use Plan, that's the 1982 Anchorage Bowl Plan, I've drawn an arrow to the petition site, you can see that it's that pink color, and the legend shows that it's on the 1982 map, the adopted land use plan map for the, for the Anchorage Bowl, shows that it's commercial industrial, the subject property is, it's proposed for a commercial industrial. The, the last map that I've handed out just now is this composite land use plan map draft was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in June of 2006. This is not a policy or an adopted plan, this is just a, sort of a draft that the commission looked at four years ago. And I've drawn where the petition site is. It shows that it's in light gray territory, which is light industrial, the L1, Light Industrial. So, that's, this map is, shows a similar sort of finding as the 1982 map, or the same finding, actually. The next thing that was in that little packet is a memo from Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility, from Brian Bous, the planning supervisor, to, to me. This was drafted this afternoon, and Mr. Brian Bous, the planning, AWU, planning supervisor, he's here, sitting in front of me, for questions related to water, because this site is on well water and on-site septic, for questions about connecting it to public water and sewer. You would, you would direct questions to him, I wouldn't be able to answer those, but he, he's here as a resource to answer your questions, and the cost, and the dangers, and what, what would be needed to do to, to connect it to public water and sewer. Now, in this area, it's not uncommon for properties to be on private or community wells and well and septic systems, or at least wells. I know that there's another block of houses closer to, across from Carl's Jr., across from the Fred Meyer site, the residential properties that are on a community well also. Now, I'd like to just go through my comments, it'll be brief, and then I'd be happy to answer questions. Piero and Kathy DiMarzo are the petitioners and owners of the subject property. The DiMarzo family is requesting to rezone their property. These are four little lots, from R2M multifamily residential to I-1 Light Industrial. Their property is located at the northeast corner of Toloff Street and 86th Court. There are only, there is only one tax ID number for these four lots, because they only, because they are economically linked, they've only been given one tax ID number. There's only been 24-foot of right-of-way dedicated to 86th Court, that's 12-foot each side of center line. 60-foot of right-of-way is the minimum right-of-way standard. So, you can see it's, it's, it's just a little bit bigger than an alley. If more right-of-way were to be dedicated, then these lots would be smaller than the minimum lot size allowed in that zoning district. The classification, the, the subject property is not identified in Anchorage 2020's land use policy map. That's the map that shows where town centers are and transportation corridors and redevelopment areas. This is an area, it's not identified in the 2020 plan. As you can see from the maps I've handed out, the 1982 plan calls it commercial industrial. And also, the, that draft land use plan map that was looked at in 2006 by the commission also calls for it to be industrial-commercial. There's I-2 property to the north, there's outdoor storage there. To the east, it's a zone R2M multifamily, there's a single-family residential house, and then as you continue on, there's some, some commercial businesses, some more residential, and then there's some light industrial uses. To the south, there is a residential house, and then there is a light industrial, actually, it's a, I don't know what you'd call it, it's a housing sales sort of office. So, the zoning district to the south is light industrial I-1, but there's a mix of light industrial uses, like storage yards, Conex boxes, there's a single-family house, there's other commercial uses within that I-1 district. To the west, it's I-2, and that's commercial, it's like the Cars Safeway sort of area. There's a single-family house on the petition site, was built in 1960. There's a mishmash of light industrial, commercial, and residential throughout the neighborhood and within that island of R2M zone properties. This sort of island of R2M properties is surrounded by industrial on all sides. Of the 69 public hearing notices that were mailed out to the neighborhood, none have been returned either for or against the, the approval of this rezone. The petitioner can speak to, you know, the impressions that he has of speaking with his neighbors. There's also no response from the community council. The planning department finds that the standard is met for approval of the rezone. The proposed rezone to I-1 is located in the area that's identified by the 1982 plan as, and the, the concept land use plan from 2006 for industrial-commercial, light industrial zoning. The current R2M zoning of the petition site does not meet the intent of the, the policy land use map. The current zoning is incongruent with the surrounding I-1 and I-2 to the north, south, and west. Policy number five, rezones and variances shall be compatible in scale and adjacent, with adjacent uses and consistent with the goals of policies of Anchorage 2020. The, the only map that we can go to is the 1982 map. The generalized land use policy number seven says avoid incompatible uses adjoining one another. This could be argued that it's incompatible to rezone this property to I-1 and have the I-1, you know, encroach into this R2M district. It could also be argued that the R2M district is incongruent with the uses that are on every other side of it. The residential policy number 14 from Anchorage 2020 says conservation of residential lands for housing is a high community priority. New residential development at densities less than identified in neighborhood and district plans is discouraged. No regulatory action under Title 21 shall result in the conversion of dwelling units or residentially zoned property into commercial or industrial uses unless consistent with an adopted plan. The 1982 plan, again, calls for this to be light industrial. The department has not recommended any special limitations on the property. However, we, we have recommended there be several effective clauses to mitigate some of the, well, to deal with some of the, the issues of rezoning the property to I-1. Essentially, the traffic department does not want, is looking, is studying right now 86th Court, does not want the petitioner to have to build any part of that road. Toloff Circle is already built. So, there's some effective clauses dealing with, you know, if this were to be rezoned, there needs to be, these four lots need to have a common access agreement, that common access agreement needs to be built to Toloff Circle, and it needs to be a commercial driveway. These are just sort of really minor things that the, that the petitioner has already worked out with the traffic department, the fire department, project management, engineering department, I'm sorry, private development is what they've been renamed. The last, well, one other criteria, it says the proposed use does not conflict with Anchorage Bowl Comp Plan. We've said before that 1982 plan calls for this to be commercial industrial. The, the rezone does not, will still be subject, this property will be subject to the, the noise ordinance, Anchorage Municipal Code Title 15.70. Air quality will be subject to Anchorage Municipal Code Title 15 dot, dot 30 and Title 15 dot 35. The petition site borders I-1 and I-2 districts on three sides, and a single-family residential house on the east side across Wannigan Street. Several of the R2M property, zone properties to the east are already used for commercial industrial property, industrial purposes. That is, there's other properties within that R2M district that are being illegally used as commercial and industrial now. And there's also, you know, a house there, too. Toloff Street is newly built street, 86th Court is a substandard road with only 24-foot of right-of-way. The petitioner should be required to provide an 18-foot wide public use easement to Toloff Circle in case the, the depart, in case the traffic department determines that there, there does need to be improvements made to the road. Traffic department is looking at ways to improve 86th Court, they do not want the petitioner to make any improvements at this time. None of the reviewing agencies have had any objection to the rezone. There does not appear to be any vacant land that's zoned I-1 within a one-mile radius that the petitioner could use. There's, there's other I-1 properties, but they all appear to be in use at this time. The, the DiMarzo family's already using this site as a light industrial, for light industrial purposes. They're parking their big trucks there. And this rezone comes out of, basically, someone in the neighborhood complained to zoning code enforcement that there was light industrial uses on this residentially zoned property. And the options for the, for Mr. DiMarzo is to either move his trucks off of the property and make it, you turn it back into, you know, the single-family residential use that's there, or if this rezone is successful, then he would continue using his business as it is. There is a, there's some laid on the table handout that you were given tonight, and it, it's labeled E1, E1, and that's, that's the incorrect label, it should be G3, which is this case. So, if you, if you could pull out the E1, and I just want to go through that really quickly, and then I'll be finished. The, the department laid this on the table for you this evening. What this is, is the department would like to make changes to the recommendations in the original report, and those changes are shown in bold italics, and so, basically, the, the original report called for five effective clauses. What, 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 what this, what this late staff report is saying is that, is striking through some of the language that should be deleted and rewriting some of these. All, nothing is being changed here, all that is being done is that this clarifies the wording. We just felt that the, the wording in the original staff report was not clear enough, this is just a little bit more specific. But the intent of each one of these effective clauses is, is unchanged, so this shouldn't faze you, it's just a little bit more specific, like the first one, a common access agreement for all four lots. Well, we've written, record a common access agreement, because it's just a little bit more specific, say, along Toloff Street, and build that access. And the, the petitioner is okay with these conditions. He may have something to say about the public use easement, but otherwise, the petitioner seems to be okay with these, these effective clauses. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner's here to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Okay, just a, a comment. It looks like on this thing that was laid on the table tonight, you go A, B, D, and E, so you may want to change that to A, B, C, and D. Since you deleted a paragraph, C, the next paragraph then should become C, and the next one, D.
Thank you.
Okay, no questions of staff, we'll now, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Yoshimura and Mr. Pruce.
Thank you for your presentation. It was brief and concise and to the point. I have just a couple of quick questions. These are four separate lots, but they have only one tax ID number. How does that happen?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, thank you for the question. I don't know too much about that, I was just, our property appraisal office will give just one tax ID when all three, or all four lots are being used for one purpose, and I, I don't know too much about that. I, I'd be happy to find out tomorrow morning and email you more. I was just, it was explained to me that it's, they're economically linked, they're only given one tax ID.
Okay, I, I just had sort of a basic curiosity. And these four lots that are economically linked are still going to be four separate lots?
That's correct.
Why is that?
Well.
Why don't they erase the lot lines? I don't understand.
Thank you for the question. That was my, that was the department's first position, too, that the, that the property is, there should be an effective clause that, that the property be re-subdivided into one. But working with all the agencies together in great coordination, we were able to, to accomplish everything that was needed to protect the public interest and the future of this property without subdividing. And you can do that through a, these effective clauses for a common access agreement to be recorded. That is to say that the property does not need to be re-subdivided so that it is reverted to acreage, so it's just one, one, one lot or tract. That could be required, that could be done, but it's not necessary, and the plating process is quite expensive. You know, the, the applicant would need to hire a surveyor, and then would need to pay the fees, and go through, you know, the, the many months to re-subdivide this, and the, the planning division felt that, and along with the other agencies, we, we met with private development, fire, the fire department, and the traffic department, it was unnecessary to go through that unnecessary expense. It would look prettier on the, on the, on the map, but it's, for our land use purposes, it doesn't make it any more cumbersome.
Well, I, I guess my question is, if you're going to have the construction of a common, common access driveway onto Toloff, how mu, and how much does that cost? I mean, where does that driveway enter and exit?
Well, I, I, I don't have the specifics on that. The, the traffic department wanted to take another look at this. If the rezone were to be successful, then, you know, they would work with, you know, Mr. DiMarzo doesn't care where it is, and the traffic department isn't in a position to say, I mean, they, they just knew that they wanted one to Toloff, and we didn't get into detail, well, along what boundary would it be, specifically where would it be? They just did two-site visits out to see that it was possible to do it, and we didn't get into more specifics.
So, did I read somewhere that these four I-1 lots will now be non-conforming, is that?
Oh, sorry, that caused confusion. Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, if, well, one of the things was considered was, okay, if they were to If, well, one of the things was considered was, okay, if they were to subdivide, or if they, if they, if they have to provide a public use easement to 86th Court, should they be required to dedicate or to provide the full 30 feet to 86th Court? Well, that would take such a large chunk out of this property. It's really just unfair burden to the, to the property owner. In fact, the traffic department doesn't want that to happen on this street. They have hired, I think it's HDR, to do a study of this street, and they've been looking at this area. So there's planning underway to how to deal with this street. But the, the traffic department did not want, you know, the, the normal half-street dedication of 30 feet. And it, the rational nexus is really just unfair. It would, it would gobble up almost all of those, the, two of the, the four lots.
Okay, I get that. I still don't, I still don't understand why, you know, they're using this property illegally now. So what would be the cost of the replat? What would be the fees for the replat?
Maybe $15,000.
Versus the cost, would they still need a-
No, no versus, they, they, we'll still get everything that we want to do without changing the map so that there's not two lot lines there. We will still, if they were to go through the replat process, they would have to provide all of these things. The only difference between this and going through the replat is the cost of the money and, that, that expense, the cost of the money, and then the, the grid map would erase those lot lines.
Anything else, Ms. Yoshimura?
Well, at some point in time, I suspect that this property will be replatted, and it seems to me now would be the appropriate time to do that.
Ms. to the chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Yoshimura, one of the issues that we looked at, too, with this rezoning request is, in terms of special limitations or effective clauses, what is necessary related to the rezone? First of all, is it rezoned appropriate for that area in general, or for those lots, of course? And then, as you know, the development and, the plat is more driven by the particular development, and this development does not require that. There are not buildings, new buildings that are going to cross the lot lines, et cetera, where we definitely have to eliminate them, where, as Mr. McLaughlin said, still going to require that the, the access be resolved. And the study is still going to go on, with the plat going to come in. You know, then sure, there would be additional requirements, but with the current use, it's not really necessary. The property appraisal linking of the properties as an economic parcel is partly because of that, sort of like a mall with multiple lots under it would have, sometimes in the same ownership, would have the same situation, older lots under it with one use. You know, it's sort of a, it's a methodology with the economic linking that causes some problems, of course, and understanding for a lot of us what exactly is going on there. But, you know, the plat is sort of a little bit separate in the department's opinion from the rezone.
Mr. Prues?
It is, we were given a, a, I guess we call it a comment, supplemental comment on this, and I can't-
Could you pull your mic closer to you?
We were given a supplemental comment today on this, this rezone from somebody, Kenneth, I think it says Kenneth, but I can't read it. I can't read what, what, what it says. It's just, it's so faded that, and I'd like to know what it's, if there's a better copy.
I saw that. If you look at the other page, it's duplexed, and it looks like it's the same comment on the back of that.
No, it's a different name, I think.
I never saw that comment.
It's on page, I've got this one, Tommy, guy named Tommy, but the other ones-
Thank you for pointing this out. I was not provided with any public comments. Looks like there were two public comments. We're just going to see if we can read them. So I'm seeing this for the first time. Kenneth, looks like Bobby, saying, no, I can't read it. And it's not in the file. Then the next one, it says, would like to see the property rezoned I-1. I think that, we'll, we'll see if we can decipher this apology. I don't know.
Would you have access to the original, or?
Well, it should be right here in front of me.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay, Mr. Parks?
I have a question about how you're going to handle the, it appears to me that you've got a house in some kind of a storage building that may cross the lot on, on that building. When I'm looking at the aerial on page 17, how's that going to be handled in, in an I-1 zoning?
Through the chair, Mr. Parks. The existing house from 1960s is currently being used as an office. It will have to be an office. It will not be allowed to be used as a, as a residential dwelling, only as an office. And did you also ask about the property, the house to the east across Wannigan?
It looks like those, the, the storage lot of the house crosses the lot line.
Oh, that's just, our aerial photography is not perfectly lined up with the lot lines.
So you believe that it is on a separate lot, and it, and it does meet the minimum requirements?
Yes, well, there's, I'm sorry, it's a little bit more complicated. The applicant has obtained a letter of non-conforming rights. So there's different issues with this old property, and where sheds are, and distances to things. But they have grandfather rights to some of these.
And when we rezone, we're going to allow them to have those rights transferred to them?
The grandfather rights run with the land, and any issues related to, problems with that will be resolved separately, irregardless of the zoning.
Is that a standard procedure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Couple of questions for staff. Could you give a response to the comments submitted by Mr. Tremont of Community Development? Requesting that there be buffers since this does join a residential area. Buffers and lighting.
Yes, Ms. Pease. So she's referring to supplemental comments, and it's the second page, and there, it says Corliss Kimmel at the top, and case 2010 dash 132. The long-range planning section says, in the second paragraph, that there needs to be something to mitigate the impacts of rezoning from R2M residential to I-1 light industrial for the property across the street, across Wannigan. And they, they want there to be a buffer landscaping there. The, our office, the current planning agrees with this, but it doesn't need to be a special limitation that would be permanently there if those other R2M properties were to be rezoned. It's actually required as a part of the zoning. I-1 light industrial, right now, requires buffer landscaping within it when abutting a residential district. And so when this is rezoned, they, through the permitting process, they will be required to install buffer landscaping along Wannigan Circle.
Thank you, that clarifies that, so we don't need to consider conditions. And then with Toloff Street, is that a collector, then? And, and under code, does that need landscaping? I was a little confused when you said that street traffic planners had, didn't quite follow what you, what you said about their designs or intentions for Toloff Street.
Toloff is a local residential street, a local street. It is not a collector.
And then through the chair, could you offer language which explains whether or not this could be conceived, considered? Spot zoning?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, there's acres and acres of I-2 and I-1 property, I'm sorry, I-2 property to the north and to the west. And then there's, you know, huge tracts of I-1 property to the south. There's no spot zone, that's not an issue here, that I can see. This property, this, although small, adjoins other I-1 property. And so they, so Mr. DeMarzo can apply, we would not have been able to accept it if it wasn't adjoining an I-1 district, but it does. And so it's not a spot zone.
Okay. And final question through the chair. Is there any response, I think someone's going to ask AWU whether there's any concern that this is a lot that uses well water, and I assume a septic system, and since it is, will be rezoned for a number of industrial uses, should there be a requirement that any industrial uses use, hook up to city water and sewer?
Right.
Through the chair, that wouldn't be a concern of AWU. It'd be up to the commission whether or not to require public water and sewer as part of this zoning action. If the commission were to require public water sewer as part of this zoning action, then the property owner would have to take it upon themselves to extend water and sewer through a private development project, mainline extension agreement, where they would pay for both the design and construction of those facilities.
I can add that the nearest water and sewer lines are two blocks away. It's several hundred dollars a foot for each of those to be extended. The cost of that could be over $100,000.
What it would be is it would be up to the property owner to design those, those facilities, so they would be constructing them. Really, AWU wouldn't be building the facilities, they would. So it would be up to them to hire a engineering contractor, whatever they would acquire those services for from those private entities, that's what they'd be paying for the extensions. Typically, developers report costs of up to $300 to $500 per foot. So as Mr. McLaughlin stated, for water, they're probably looking at about $375,000 to $625,000. For sewer, that's about $204,000 to $340,000.
Okay, I'll have some follow-up questions on that, but I don't want to hold up the public part of the hearing, so I'll hold them.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Yeah, I have three brief questions. Doesn't a rezone negate grandfather rights?
Well, a rezone will sometime, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, no. So if, if I have a property and I have, you know, grandfather rights, non-conforming rights under chapter 2155, if I rezone the property to another district, but the structure stays right where it is, the rezoning could affect the property in terms of changing the setbacks. But in this case, that has been looked at, the rezone, the only thing that the planning, planning section wants to see is that the, the house no longer be used as a house, because now it has become industrial. But the issues of setbacks and the lot coverage and all of those things have been dealt with through the land use review section and are resolved.
Are they currently using the property as a residence? Is there someone living there?
Well, it's, it's being rented, and it's being used as an office. Actually, I'm a little unclear whether or not somebody actually sleeps there. The petitioner could speak to that.
Okay. And what permit would they be applying for that would then require the landscaping buffer to be installed? What would that permit be?
Well, when they, when they apply to build a commercial driveway, I have a whole list of things that I, that my, that the, I'm sorry, the, the planning division and other offices have looked at, you know, blocking the existing driveway, installing the landscaping. I have a list of them, and they're actually highlighted and taped to the front of the file. So there's, there's things to follow up on with, but they've been looked at. So some of the things we're going to look at, they will be required, of course, to record a common access agreement for all four lots and access to Toloff Circle and to build that access. It has to be a commercial driveway. They have to record an 18-foot public use easement where abutting 86th Court. They need to resolve with private development and in the traffic department the need to enter into a public places agreement to improve Toloff Street and 86th Court to peripheral half-street standards. Later information has showed that neither of those offices want that to actually happen. And then they need to close off the existing driveway to 86th Court. They need to install buffer landscaping where the subject property abuts Wannigan Circle. Now, this doesn't need to be in a, a special limitation or an effective clause, because it'll be dealt with with the commercial driveway. They need to provide proof to planning that the house has been converted to an office. They need to provide an as-built of the subject property and clear up any encroachments. That's something that's already been taken care of, too. So, but these are things that, you know, sort of can be worked out, that, that aren't as important to whether or not the property is appropriate to be zoned I-1, or should stay R2M, or should be rezoned to some other zoning district.
You know, we've had several, well, not several cases, but some cases where we've done a rezone, and then the petitioner sort of has it both ways. They keep their existing use, but they get a rezone. And so I guess my concern here is, how are you going to verify or enforce that, that this residential structure, which is currently being used, I'm going to say, as a residential structure and combination office, because, you know, you talked about the converting it, which means that it probably is. How do we avoid making this property function both ways, so to speak? You know, being used as part residential and part commercial, which it appears to be currently doing now. I think that's an important, an important issue.
Yeah, that's a good question. Enforcement of this being, not being, the house not being used as a, as a residence will be the same way that we enforce the zoning code for any other case. When, when, when a complaint is made, then there'll be a code enforcement officer that goes out and investigates. Now, I can just tell you, the reality of the situation is that the petitioner is getting quite a huge benefit by this rezone, and he is all too happy to, to not use this as a residence. He offered that, he's, I mean, the, the petitioner in this case has stated that he does not, he care, it does not matter to him, it's not important to him to continue using this as a, as a residence if, if it is.
Anything else, Ms. Yoshimura? Mr. Parks?
Couple of questions. Is a residential use permitted inside an I-1 zone?
Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin's looking it up. It's dependent, I believe, on structure size, but he's looking it up to be exact.
Not allowed? No, not allowed. As a primary permitted use? As an accessory use? So that, that permitted principal uses, it lists-
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
So residential dwelling is allowed as an accessory unit? In the-
Allowed as accessory unit to a principal commercial use? Structure or use?
Says in the same structure with the permitted principal use, one dwelling unit may be occupied as an accessory use.
Okay. So that tells me that it is possible to have a residential unit in this area? Although that's not intended, is my understanding. Okay. The other question I had is, and these are very basic questions, how long has this used in operation approximately?
The petitioner would know better. My guess is I think it's like four years.
And exactly what type of use is it? Is it a storage operation?
Yes, a storage of large trucks. When I was out there, there was a dump truck parked there, that was it. But I think there may be other vehicles that are parked there as well.
Why is it that this dwelling use was allowed in the R2 zone? Do you have any sort of sense about that?
Yeah, it wasn't. But because so many properties that are, there are other residential properties, people don't know what their zoning is in some cases. And sometimes they do and they're carrying forward illegally. Basically, there's a lot of industrial use, there's a lot of, so there's a lot of industrial zone property, and some of it is being used for commercial, some of it is being used for industrial, and some of it, and this is being used for residential. Also, there's this grouping of residential lots that are R2M, and this is, the petition side is one of those. And it was, it's being used as, you know, a light industrial use. Next door is, is an allowed use, which is a single-family house. And then the next property over is, is another, like, Conex box storage. And then the next property after that is an automotive care storage. So there's just a bunch of, there's a, the whole area has industrial uses, there are some residential uses as well. Some of those residential uses are on industrial property, and it's just a mixed mac, you know, mismatch of a bunch of different uses in one area. It was, it was turned in earlier this year, and the petitioner's given two choices, either rezone the property or stop using it as light industrial.
So the reason this is before is because of a complaint, essentially?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the complaint.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, fine, let's go ahead on with the public hearing. Let's hear from the petitioner or his representative.
Good evening.
Sir, you've got 10 minutes.
My name is Pio J. Demarzo. I really don't have much to say. Just, I'm surrounded by industrial or commercial property. It just makes sense to make it industrial, so that's what I'm asking. We can just change it. Thanks.
Okay, that's all, sir? Okay, fine, we'll have some questions. And Mr. Phelps?
You've heard the testimony this evening or the discussion this evening about the residential use that exists there and that the intention is not to have that particular use. Is that correct, that you're going to be using that structure for commercial purposes in the future?
Yes, sir.
We have what's called special limitations zoning, wherein you can actually constrain a use. Would you accept a prohibition on residential uses in that, in that rezoning, or in this rezoning?
I don't mind.
You don't mind? Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Parks?
Just got a couple of questions about your long-term planning for that property. I-1 property generally is not 8,500 square feet per lot. Is it your concern later on that you may want to build on that lot and would not have room to do that, to put it on an individual lot?
I started a business a long, long time ago from my house, and business started growing. My wife pretty much kicked the business out of the house. As we started buying, diversifying, started buying trucks, we had that property. And I know I broke the law, I really didn't know about zoning. I'm learning today a lot about it. I just put the trucks in there as a way of getting them out of my wife's way. What am I going to do in the future? I have no idea right now.
I guess my question would be to you that you understand that if you were to put a bigger building on there, that you're going to have to get rid of the lot line at some point in time?
Yeah, but I mean, that's going to be planning. If I don't do something, I'll make sure I'll, I'll tape the lines, I mean, I'll do whatever it takes. Right now, I don't have any, any plan for it. Or I don't know planning on doing that.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Since you have a residence on the site currently, I assume you have a septic system, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is the capacity of that septic system?
No idea.
Okay. Usually the septic system permit is for a certain number of bedrooms, so do you...
I have no idea.
Okay. And then you have your own private well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to testify in this case? Okay, sir, you have an opportunity to rebut. You didn't use all of your time. Do you want to add anything else to, to what you said? You don't have to. You may if you want. Okay, fine. Okay, I'm going to close. Public hearing, decision rests with the commission.
I have further questions of staff, if I may.
Okay, we have a motion, and you've seconded it. Go ahead and let's do the...
Yes. Through the chair. How typical to staff and the representative from AWWU, how typical is it to have industrial uses on a well and a septic system of unknown capacity? Is that really common throughout this I-1 district?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, it happens. It really depends on the use of the industrial property. If it's small enough and they have an existing well and septic, then there is, there is industrial property out there with well and septic. AWWU typically serves to density and to land use. If the land use doesn't support public water and sewer and the property owner doesn't desire it, then we don't build it to serve that property.
Okay. To Mr. McLaughlin, what concerns ought we to have about the fact that under an I-1, this could become an automobile car wash, a plant nursery, an unlicensed nightclub, an amusement arcade? Some things that would either require and generate a lot of wastewater or require and generate a lot of sort of, you know, toilet facilities? He would have to come back for a water and wastewater extension requirement under those permitted by right uses, is that correct?
Brian might be able to help me with that, but my understanding is that when he applied for a building permit to build any structure, they would look at whether or not the well and septic were, were suitable. Right now, there's just that one house.
Right. And through the chair, if they did construct another use on the property and did require public water and sewer, then they'd have to go through that private development agreement process and extend it through, through our tariff methodology.
I guess my question is, though, would water and sewer automatically be required if it were a car wash or something that generated a lot of human, human users?
I think yes.
I'm looking for more than I think.
Through the chair, it's, all we can tell you at this time is it's very situational. It really depends on what comes in, exactly what they have going on generally with these things. They would have to, with their permit, you know, if you wanted us to look at some specifics, if that would make it easier for you, we could take that back and take it to DEC, et cetera, and get that information.
Public water and sewer extension usually follows land use, not the other way around. So it would, it would be up to the users to build, to build a structure or business or something that would require the extension of public water and sewer. It wouldn't be the other way around.
Okay. I guess, I guess I'll have faith that the permitting process for a water intensive use would deal with that situation.
Okay, Mr. Phelps, have you made the motion, I believe?
Yes, I'll make a motion. In the case of the rezoning of four lots, which total approximately 0.8 acres from R2M, local family residential to I-1, in the location specified on page one of the packet, I move for the approval of the rezoning to I-1, subject to the staff recommendations that were given to us as a handout, but also adding a new, I guess it'd be E, the prohibition on residential structures on the lot.
Ms. Pease, are you seconding that?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to your motion, Mr. Phelps?
Yes, the area right now is a mix between commercial, residential, industrial. And so you have a whole variety of uses. The tendency in this area is for the land use parents to move more toward commercial and industrial, or at least that's been the pattern the last five to 10 years. But perhaps more importantly, the comprehensive plan establishes the basis for the rezoning. And the plan in this particular case identifies the areas being commercial and industrial. So this rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And for that reason, I believe it's appropriate. The other thing to be aware of is that the current use has existed there for some period of time, and that use has only come as being an issue as a result of a zoning complaint. If it were not for that particular complaint, we probably would not even be dealing with this issue this evening. In any event, I believe that this particular rezoning is in the overall public interest. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will provide public benefits.
Mr. McLaughlin, you're in the queue.
Through the chair, Mr. Phelps, just a point of clarification. I think you said this, this would be a condition, but did you mean to say that it would be a special limitation of the zoning district?
What I said is that there's a series of conditions that are identified in the staff number and everything.
Effective clauses?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I would add one to that. I would add this to one of those effective clauses.
Okay.
I think it's E.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I would like to add some findings. This case might have raised concerns with regard to spot zoning because of the very small size of the properties and the fact that the benefits appear to accrue primarily to the owners, more so than to the neighbors, certainly the residential neighbors who have complaints. However, staff has pointed out that there is I-1 land surrounding this subject parcel on three sides, and furthermore, the comprehensive plan calls for this to be commercial and industrial. So on that basis, rezoning to industrial does appear to have some public benefits and follow the public plan. There's also the concern of whether, Policy 7, the comp plan, whether, which says to avoid incompatible uses adjoining one another. I think we're dealing with this through the application of the title 21 setbacks and landscape requirements. 2140-210F and 2140-045G will require some setback and some degree of screening structure along the residential property boundary. And staff has assured us that those will be installed as part of the commercial driveway permit, along with any requirements on lighting that may be applicable when industrial adjoins residential. So it is a transition, but I think we've got some assurances through code that there will be mitigation of the adjoining uses.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm going to support the motion from R2M to I-1, even though I always have serious reservations about the loss of higher-density residential property in the Anchorage Bowl, particularly in southeast Anchorage, where there seems to be a growing demand and need for it. However, I recognize that this is probably the highest and best use for this property in, in this particular location, and especially given the fact that the water and sewer extensions are so far away that it is not possible at this particular point in time for development along that block of R2M. So I'm going to support the motion, but I have to say that I am very disappointed in staff's recommendation not to require that these, that these lot lines be erased, because this is basically a commercial use that is going to be, the entire property is going to be used for one use. It is economically linked, as per staff has so stated. And I understand that $15,000 might be a lot of money for the petitioner at this particular point in time, but that is no reason to violate what I believe is good public policy.
Mr. Parks?
I-2 will be supporting this with some reluctance, just because I know this property in that area very well. It is primarily being used as I-1. However, I-2 have some concerns about taking four lots and making it one use and not requiring them to move the lot lines, only because I know that at some point in time, that'll have to be addressed. The chances of taking an I-1 piece of property at 8,500 square foot and doing anything with it in this community is slim to none. I do believe that at some point in time, we'll see the water and sewer moved into those streets. But I think for this particular case, it's appropriate for us to approve it.
Any further comments? Is there any objection? It's approved. The records show that Mr. Phelps has an appointment and is leaving. And now moving on to case number four, 2010-133, Chugash Electric Association zoning conditional use for utility substation. Could you hear the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This request, as you had stated, is to allow the expansion of utility substation for electricity on five lots in the GC3 zoning district. This review, there are no specific conditional use standards for utility substation. They generally cite new specific. This review is to determine the appropriateness and compatibility with the surrounding area for an electric, excuse me, electrical substation at the location. This particular use predate zoning and has legal non-conforming rights to the use and structure on the lots. Currently, it's on lots 17 and 18. And the application consists of two phases. The expansion is needed to replace the old equipment and provide a more reliable service for growing population in the area. And the first phase planned for year 2012 is for improvements just to the existing substation currently on the two lots. It's to replace the switchgear and, on the existing pad that it's on, or existing location it's on, on the site, and to remove another control building on the site. The entire second phase, which is the eventual expansion of the substation onto lots 19 and 20 and 21 as well, will be completed within a couple of construction seasons, but that is not going to incur until sometime between the years 2015 and 2025. Pages three and four of your staff packet have the first and the second phase for your reference, if you need them at this time. Department finds that this does meet the standards for a conditional use and does recommend approval subject to four conditional, excuse me, four conditions of approval on pages eight, nine of the staff packet. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Okay, fine, let's go ahead and move into the public hearing. The petitioner, you have 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve four minutes for rebuttal.
Four?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with Dalhke M., representing Chugash Electric Association on the substation in Gerwood. And it is a modification to an existing, basically de facto, conditional use, because the substation has existed for a long time and before zoning in this area. Likewise, we've taken a long-term view of attempting to look out into the future, as was raised as a significant issue by the land use committee and the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, to what the long-term utilization of the remainder of the parcels were... Where Chugatch Electric purchased additional lots some time ago in order to be able to serve the long-term needs of the Girdwood Valley. With me tonight are several representatives from Chugatch Electric as well, and Michelle Witter from Dalhke M., who's been working on the project as well. So if you have questions, we can attempt to answer those. Actually, Chugatch Electric's been working with the Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for a couple of years on the primary issue of the substation and its location and expansion needs in the valley. What is before you tonight is a two-phase project. The first is a very simple modification, actually a reduction in the improvements within the fence boundary of the existing substation. And if any of you have property in Girdwood or have friends and the switch goes out at this substation and the power goes out in the Girdwood Valley, typically the culprit is the switch in the substation. It's old, it's in need of being upgraded, and the issue here is to simply go in and put in a new, higher-tech, very reliable switch component to the substation. At this point in time, they're actually exposed on telephone poles, materials that actually equate to a switch, and what this proposal would do would be to take a smaller switch that's higher-tech, put it inside an enclosure, and give it some protection. That does two things. It makes it much more reliable, being an updated switch component. It's inside a facility which gives it additional weather protection, and it reduces the sound impact to the adjacent properties, which everyone has indicated would be a good thing. In the long term, what we're looking at is taking a number of the remainder lots that Chugatch Electric purchased and going ahead and now establishing what the footprint of an expanded full-out development of the substation would be sometime in the future. And with the data out there that this could happen somewhere between 2015 and 2025, it is really dependent upon the marketplace and what the market demands are for power in the Girdwood Valley. And with that in mind, it could be that cogeneration is put together with Aliaska Resort, and a significant demand would be not required to go through this substation. It's not sure, we don't know, so that's why this, what you would typically say would be a vague time period is there. It really depends on demand. Part of that would be the general economy, and part of that would be what the resort does to meet its own power demands, whether they come off the grid or they develop their own co-gen facility. So that explains that longer time period. The Land Use Committee has supported this long study, and the outcome of this, as did the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, voted in favor of this proposal. And hopefully in the record you'll see how many times we went and Chugatch Electric met with the community, the Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors over this fairly lengthy review. This was a significant issue to the valley, as power services. There have been discussions, and Chugatch Electric did look into potential other locations for meeting long-term needs, and they are very cost prohibitive. The community was not necessarily willing to take on that expense from an infrastructure standpoint, and in the long run, there's always costs and benefits. So if you moved it to another location, all of a sudden you'd have requirements for running higher-powered, above-ground lines to another location, and probably having a bigger impact and a more significant impact on the aesthetics of the area. The substation's been there for a significant amount of time, and the initial modification that we're looking at right now actually removes a structure from inside the facility that houses some of the components. It removes the shed that is there storing some equipment, and consolidates that all into a much smaller shed-type unit. So the impact should be less. The community indicated that they did not want us to put the fence in with the first phase, because the actual footprint and the size of the structures inside would be smaller, and they didn't want to disturb the existing vegetation that surrounds the substation at this time, and called for the fence material to be placed when the expanded substation is constructed. And in that, they asked us to modify some of the plant materials from lilac bushes to go ahead and use alder and willow. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Potter?
I have one question. You said you had to replace some switchgear. Does that require a conditional use to do that, or, I mean, can't you just go in and do it?
That's an interesting question. I would suggest that Chugatch Electric probably could have gone in and modified the switch material and equipment, and no one would have thought it was anything but standard maintenance. The staff, because it is a de facto conditional use and there are grandfather rights, believe that if you modify anything inside the facility, that it requires an update of the conditional or a new conditional use permit. I actually believe that the staff is in error, but we are attempting to work with the staff. I believe that in fact the perimeter fence of the substation creates what you have grandfather rights to have a substation within, and that you could maintain and modify that as necessary. We've had multiple discussions. Angela and I still disagree on that point. We've been working with the community for a couple of years, and it just seemed like it was appropriate to come forward, address the issue for Phase One, and also allow the community to comment on, consider, and give Chugatch Electric the knowledge and confidence that they can meet the power needs without going back and revisiting this again for the long-term needs of the valley. So.
You're being good guys. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, you said you had numerous meetings with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Did you discuss with them how construction traffic will be managed since it appears that the lot, the commercial mall lot is the de facto roadway, or crosses the de facto roadway for access to the site? I'm looking at this aerial photo.
Looking at that, and your question is?
Is the community satisfied that construction traffic will be handled in a way that doesn't interrupt that very busy commercial mall? You probably know the boat trailers, RVs, bikers coming right into the end of Gold Avenue during the summer.
That's interesting. I'd like to address that a little bit. I did see your comment that the staff forward had gone to me, and as Mr. Prus would know, that before you can do a project that has anything to do with construction as you get a building permit, if you're going to have any impact on the public driveway, you have to do a traffic plan, and that has to be approved by the municipal traffic engineer, and then you have to abide by that. So that as you have a concern about the entrance to the mall at that location, there is an easement that was put together as part of that project, and it's on the recorded plat, but there would be an access easement across the corner of the mall property and parking lot to access Gold and Billy's Alley. There is actually another street that has direct access out to the highway that would accommodate additional access. So there are other ways to get in and out and have one movement in and one movement out if necessary, but we're anticipating that even the Phase Two construction is not a significant construction project. Effectively, what they'd be doing is just, they would take a hydroax, melt down the material that's on the lots, and then come in and bring in a, on top of geotextile fabric, gravel pad approximately three to five feet thick, and then build on top of that, and the fence line would be built around the property as well, and then the landscaping put in. It's in relative nature, very small project, and would not take very much time. So we think between any traffic controls, signage, and safety efforts taken, and the size of the project, that it's not a big issue from a construction vehicle endpoint.
Thank you.
Mr. Prus?
Thank you. With the future substation upgrade, is there any anticipation or talk or plans from transitioning from above-ground to below-ground power lines?
I better let an expert in electrical stuff talk about this one, or I'll get in over my head. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Phil Steier, S-T-E-W-I-E-R. I work for Chugatch Electric. We have an ongoing program of converting overhead lines to underground. Specific to this project, there's not a conversion of overhead and underground lines specifically associated with the substation project. This substation project would enable the addition of a second feeder at some point in time to serve the community. Currently, Girdwood is fed by a single feeder out of the substation, and the equipment would provide the ability to have a second feeder in that. What that means on a practical basis is we won't have all our eggs in one basket. We'll break the wiring system up so that one problem wouldn't necessarily put everyone in a debt. But that is something that is not specific to the underground issue. Bottom line, we install facilities underground today, developers install facilities underground, which we then acquire and manage, and we have an ongoing program that converts overhead lines to underground.
I want to speak about the main feeds and those that won't be underground, the main lines.
The substation is fed by a transmission line. The transmission line is overhead now, the transmission line will remain overhead later.
So you don't know then if you have a second feeder line downstream, whether or not that'll be above-ground or below-ground at this time?
The second feeder line's construction methodology would need to be consistent with municipal ordinance. In general, new stuff goes underground at certain voltages and below, but there are exceptions depending upon land consideration. For instance, wetlands, you may go overhead across wetlands, and that's foreseen in the ordinance and allowed. Until the route for the second feeder is specifically identified, I can't tell you exactly how it would be done, but my guess is most probably would be underground.
You're on the record.
I was getting confirmation from he who would pay for the life.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
I just have one question, and that's the property that's to the north of there. Is that currently being used? Not the mall, but the stuff that's on the north side of that?
On the north side of that?
You know, the north side of the piece, towards Aliaska on that road.
Sure. If you look on the... Actually, as you can see on this board and in your packet, Chugatch Electric owns these two lots and these four lots, a total of six. And this is the expansion area that's shown on that area, with the expansion area simply covering five of the lots as currently shown.
When I'm looking at this page, I'm seeing your area there, there's four more lots that are adjacent to it. Can you tell me what the use is of those lots currently, or those residential lots that aren't being used? Maybe I'm...
They are owned by Chugatch Electric, and they are not being, they are vacant and not being used for residential development at this time.
Okay. No, that's exactly what I wanted. They are being used as residential, then, the ones that are adjacent. I can see that.
I guess I need to... Adjacent to our expansion area?
Yes.
Yes, those are being used for residential purposes at this time.
And do you think the noise is going to be and the lighting is going to be such that it's going to impact those four lots virtually there that are next to them, to that expansion area that you're going to have?
The expansion area is purposely designed to be one lot away from those.
You're going to have one-lot buffers, which you're...
We will have a one-lot buffer. Chugatch Electric will be able to utilize that and sell it to a homeowner, home builder, that can build a residence directly adjacent to the substation.
And is that one of the requirements, the restriction that you have, that you will not be able to put anything on that lot?
That is correct. The footprint of our conditional use does not incorporate that lot.
So it'll be just five of the lots?
We're going to be using five of the lots for the substation development in the future, and Chugatch Electric has held the sixth lot basically within the boundary of what they have there under conditional use, but they're not looking to expand the substation onto that lot.
Will that lot be fenced as part of the substation, or will it be left blank?
It would be left blank.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter?
Can you go a little bit further with the lighting and everything else, the municipal standards, so it'll all have to be shielded, lighting and that? And that actually should be an upgrade that happens now with the first phase. There should be lighting improvements as well. That will reduce the shine that might go off-site. The fence that's being proposed with Phase Two is also very significant and is a solid fence, and then has integrated mesh panels in it that will have vegetation growing on that. We've identified New Zealand kiwi as a non-invasive plant species. It does very well. If you want to come by and see one, I've got one at my house, and it does great. And they grow quickly, and they have the side benefit of that if you have a male and a female plant, they actually make fruit that you can eat, so we'll have a harvest.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, sir, you've got four minutes for rebuttal remaining. If anybody else wishes to testify? Please state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Jim Kaiser, K-A-I-S-A-R. I live in Old Girdwood. I have been a property owner and business owner in Girdwood since 1977. I oppose what is projected here. I don't believe that the location is good. Old Girdwood is three square blocks. You're taking a lot of land out of that neighborhood and putting a box around it. It's destroying, even with kiwis, the aesthetics. You're putting a structure that will block the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the single-family homes that are down there, the businesses that are down there. The only way into Old Girdwood at this time is through a parking lot or crossing double-yellow lines on the sewer highway. If anything was to happen at that substation, nobody could get into my neighborhood. I'm concerned about safety issues, and I'm very concerned about the noise, the light, and the traffic. I don't believe it's a good location. I don't believe that alternative locations have been properly addressed, and I believe that if it's such a small thing right now, that it could be moved to another location right now, and that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kaiser? Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet. You bet.
My name is Linda Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I lived in Girdwood in July 1st, 1975. My husband and I have had property and raised our family down there. We do have a lot in Old Girdwood, so I will tell you that. However, in 1994, '95, when this came first up for variance on the Chugash Electric zoning, my husband and I both testified against it. It is an industrial activity in an area that has now been zoned, a light commercial residential. With their plans, and I don't know what these pictures are, I also have some pictures, the property that they're developing, which would be six lots that could be used as a tax base for either residence or light commercial, has taken up some valuable property in Girdwood. It needs to be moved tomorrow to an area that's industrial. We actually located an area, I'm sorry, Mr. Phelps isn't here, very close to their transmission lines that go from a switching station on the corner there at the curve where the railroad tracks to go across, to Toadstool Road, which you'll see on probably these overheads, the road that goes from the Seward Highway up to the DOT yard. There is an area there owned by Mental Health Trust. They actually acknowledged and said that they'd be willing to trade properties, some of that property that they have there, the big tract, with Chugash Electric's property in original Girdwood town site. And we talk about Eagle River, and they've already been through one remodel. I remember the Old Glen Highway, when it was the Glen Highway. It was a mess. People used to die all the time at Eagle River Road and the Old Glen. We're probably thinking about it, what big deal is it? You know, but here we are in Girdwood, still in the stages of youth, let's call it. What are we going to do in 10 years? They're profiling this out. Chugash Electric has pushed this through 2025. I think it's really short-sighted. I think we need to, and believe me, I'm a fan of Chugash Electric. Those guys are out in all sorts of crappy weather down there. They're the first on the site. They take care of us wonderfully, but what they need is an industrial area that they can expand without any application for any kind of variance. They need their own property, they need five to 10 acres, something that they can develop, maybe another area. You know, I asked them at one of the meetings what their 50-year plan was, and I got blank stares. So... Is that it? Is that all I got?
Well, you're out of time, but there's a question from Ms. Pease.
Yes, through the chair. Did you participate in the meetings held before the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and sort of what, was it a unanimous? We just have a letter of non-objection in our packet, so I don't really know how the discussions went. Can you tell me a little bit about...
Yes, in fact, I was on the subcommittee. The Land Use Committee first had, first dibs with Chugash Electric. In 2008, they had a meeting with the Land Use Committee, from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. In 2008, it was a motion to send a letter of non-objection of the project to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. The vote was 52 against and 7 for.
Excuse me, this was the subcommittee had 50 some?
No, this was the Land Use Committee. Before we were a subcommittee...
Okay.
The Land Use Committee motioned to send a letter of non-objection of the project to the Board of Supervisors. The vote was 52 nay, 7 yay. In other words, it was a huge movement objecting to the development. As an aside, I will tell you this. There has been a lot of misinformation concerning this project, including information from Mr. Chugash, Mr. Steyer, saying that, stating that Girdwood users, of which I believe there's about 1,600 meters, something like that, would have to pay for the upgrade or the move if that happened. I think I have it on pretty good information, but that is pretty false, and that this would be a capital expense that Chugash would bear, much like what they just developed in hope to the tune of 10 million bucks.
Any further questions from Ms. Bennett?
If I could do a follow-up. Did I finish? I'm sorry, I didn't know if I finished answering your question.
Well, I'm just, is there anything else that you can say to clarify how you got, how Girdwood citizens got from a 52 to 7 opposition to a letter of non-objection, which doesn't state a vote or any concerns or mitigation?
I was not at the August meeting, and I apologize that I don't have information about that. We were all kind of surprised, especially the original Girdwood Townsite residents. The, basically, I think what they did is just pretty much wore us down. As far as spreading misinformation throughout the community, there was a meeting, a couple meetings of Girdwood 2020, which is an active group of development-oriented people in Girdwood. And they are, of course, afraid, and we all are, we don't want to think that our taxes are going to be raised, or that we're going to have added expense to what we already spent money on. And so this information about the Girdwood users would have to bear the expense, possibly a couple million bucks, maybe more, for development, I think is once again short-sighted on Chugash's part as well, because, you know, here we are, we're Eagle River only 20 years before. You know, there's certain things to be said for putting things where they belong, getting that substation into an industrial area where they can, you know, we'd love to see that happen, get back our old Girdwood town site. The concerns I have, especially hearing Mr. Potter say that there was going to be between two and five feet of fill for the new development portion where the new transformer set's going to go. Has anybody been to Old Girdwood on high tide? It's substantial low, you know, ground. It's swampy at the best. For them to add five feet of fill on their property will greatly affect, and yes, there are people that have wells, and we do have sewer in Old Girdwood now, but we don't have a water system yet. So people do have wells. People have wells less than 30 feet from the existing substation. So as far as how we got to this letter of non-objection that GBIS presented to Chugash and to the planning and zoning, it's been two years. Our subcommittee got together, that's when we had, in fact, Dowell engineers did the work on it, a relocation investigation dated June 16th, 2009, from Dora Gropp, who's an engineer with Chugash. The major costs involved, there were three areas kind of highlighted for investigation. One is that Toadstool Road I told you about, that makes the most sense in my mind. The other one was a gravel pit south of Girdwood, a kind of virgin creek area. And the third and the most expensive would have been the industrial site, which is about a mile up valley near where the Girdwood dump is, our transfer site. So we thought we were moving ahead, however, with these guys and they're professionals. Mr. Potter is a professional, he gets paid lots of money for what he does. I have some questions about this planning department analysis and what Dowell engineers presented, including one thing that says, "Electrical substations do not generate air or water pollution." Okay? Do any of you people live next to them? They're noisy, they make sounds, not to mention the fact that if you've ever seen on YouTube the substation fires that can occur, it's not a pretty site. We have no fire plans that I know of, or any kind of situation. We don't even have fire hydrants down there. So I would like to see these people move to an industrial site, and we can regain original Girdwood town site.
Any further questions?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. Fire suppression is volunteer fire department and...
Volunteer fire department paid by your chief.
And no hydrants in this area if you're not on...
Not in Old Girdwood.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. Bennett? Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lauren Moss. I reside at 166 Old West Street, which is the first lot on the north adjacent edge of the proposed revision. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your time and effort to hear our concerns. I have been a 30-year resident of Old Girdwood, and I've resided on this property at 166 Old West Street for a little over 10 years. And I would like to remind all of the committee members that there are 21 primary family residences in this Old Girdwood area, occupied full-time. The three properties that Mr. Parks referred to north of the line are all family residence, full-time occupied properties. There are five different bedrooms, which would be within 80 feet of the main transformer, occupied full-time, and when the final 10-foot wall went up, it would be 20 feet from my bedroom, and the low winter light would cast a low-angle shadow that would go onto our property by about 10 or 15 feet. So that would mean a permanent frozen shady area that would last for five months of every year on the edge of our property. So it's a concern for us. We feel that the people that oppose this project at the land use planning meetings in Girdwood felt that this was promoting the Spurnard effect in Old Girdwood, and just based on grandfathering in of a bad thing that started way before planning and zoning. The other bad thing that started down there, when I first arrived, there was a Texaco station there, and it's since changed in grandfathered into this giant Tesoro station, which is the flagship station of the whole United States for Tesoro. This thing makes more money, it's a high-traffic area, extremely high-traffic area, it has, makes the most revenue of any Tesoro station in the nation. We have no water system down here provided by the municipality. We're all on wells. This is going to be a substation expansion next to a totally volatile fuel source, and we have a volunteer fire department. It would be across the street from the giant gas station, and then there's no bedroom next to that. It just flies in the face of all reason here, and it's just in order to provide power to the, you know, expanded tax base for the municipality. And there is an industrial parking Girdwood already zoned for these kinds of uses. It's an eyesore to our visitors that come into the, to the, look how high it's going to be. There's going to be one tower that's 70 feet high. Our visitors to Girdwood are going to, that's the first thing they're going to see.
Please stand by.
Pardon?
Fine. Ms. Pease, you got a question?
Yes, since you live in the, in the old town site, could you explain the access, if there were to be some kind of an accident at this site, who would have alternative access? Which streets would have alternative access and which would...
Oh, that's, that's another thing that, there will probably be at least five or six residences which will have, will not have any evacuation corridor, except going right past the substation. We basically will have to get out of our houses and run down railroad tracks to get away from this.
And would those be the residences in the same...
On Old West Street and Billy's Alley.
Okay. The residences on Billy's Avenue don't have access off of Main Street, then?
One does and one, one does and two don't, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions from Ms. Moss? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further testimony?
My name's Tim Bennett, and I, spell it as B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I've been living in Girdwood area for the past 30-plus years. I've served on the Board of Supervisors, and had the opportunity of dealing with this question back in 1995. At that time, there was great concern in the community around the visual aspect of the growth of this project to what is the entry to Alaska's premier ski resort and a growing commercial area. There's limited commercial space in Girdwood, both in the new Girdwood town site and in the original Girdwood town site, which is the area that we're talking about. At that time, recommendation was made to relocate this facility, that was 15 years ago, to an area that is now part of the Mental Health Trust lands. They have addressed an interest in discussing and negotiating a relocation with Chugash, bringing power out of that location, which was adjacent to the railroad tracks and right, basically on the side, the inlet side of the railroad tracks from the state yard. It's a very feasible location, taking their power back to their main service distribution line going up Alaska Highway is feasible, and it's also probably about the same distance that their current run from the existing substation is to that feeder line, or distribution line. So the questions that I have really are that they haven't gone into the detail, they've just made statements about their costs, but really haven't looked at the original, what's the value to Girdwood in 20 years, 30 years, 50 years? What are we creating here? The opportunity to do it right is in front of us, the opportunity to do it wrong is also in front of us. And I strongly suggest that this is not adopted, and that we do look at some real viable long-term solutions, which is what this planning commission is about, is planning for the future. And I ask that you look at it in more detail. The community has spoken many times about this. Their most current vote, I understand, is 24 to 7 in favor. The process sitting on the board, I know how this works, and you just may not make enough phone calls to get the people that you want to the community meeting, and you can change the direction that the community has really said over the years, how they want to go, not just one meeting.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi, thanks for coming out tonight. It's, you mentioned that we're talking about the entrance to the premier ski resort in the state, and certainly Alieska's a wonderful asset. What's the, you said the visual impact is very of concern. How would you suggest if you were to be unable to move the location of the facility? You know, I know that's your first choice, but what if you couldn't get that and you could just have some influence over the appearance? What would you suggest?
I have no way to suggest that you can hide a 70-foot-tall communication tower, sticking up, providing cell service or whatever aspect is on this communication tower that they haven't even really talked about this evening, that's going to be in the middle of this development. So right now, the poles that are sitting up in these pictures are approximately 40 feet high. Double the height of it after you add five feet of fill, take it higher by another five feet to what you're already seeing, I don't have any way to hide that. That's not the proper location for it. You're not going to, you're not going to put a fence tall enough without blocking the neighbors. There's just not a createable solution for that location for this particular... There's just not a createable solution for that location for this particular industrial application.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Bennett? Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify? Mr. Potter, you've got, wait a minute, here we go. One more person testifying, sorry.
Sorry, it took me a moment to decide whether I was going to say something here and maybe offend my friends who have already talked. My name is George Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T. I'm a short-term resident of Girdwood, I've lived there for three years. I live kind of on the other side of the Aliaska Highway from Old Girdwood. The comment that I want to make as we talk about visual impact, if they talk about using the Toadstool Road site, unless we put it way back up in the hill, if we put it on the south side of the railroad tracks, the visual impact is going to be much, much worse. If we can put it up the hill from where the, the State Highway Department has their facility now, then it could be kind of hidden back there. But the visual impact could be really worse on the Toadstool site. That's all I wanted to say.
Any questions from Mr. Stewart?
Thank you.
Thank you sir. Anybody else wish to testify? Okay, let's try it again, Mr. Potter, you've got four minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm going to take just thirty seconds and then let Shigashi Electric address a list of items that were brought up. But I would emphasize that there was a very significant study and report done that was done in concert with a special committee created by the Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to work with the issue of could it feasibly and economically be relocated? As far as emergency access goes, I'll let Phil talk about what there is to burn or blow up or create an emergency at the substation. I think the fact that a wood-stick-built house in that area would have a much more significant exposure for emergency access and ability to spread fire up and down the valley than the substation does. As far as traffic, yes, there will be traffic during the construction phase of the expansion sometime between 2015 and 2025. But the typical traffic circulation or utilization of the site is simply for maintenance and check-in. If there's a vehicle a day, that would be where, a vehicle a week is more like it. I will note that we did anticipate some of the discussion. Clearly, it's been an issue that's been ongoing for a while. And I would note that is my understanding based on checking records and Chugash Electric's real estate people checking records, that all of the residents in question and that have spoken tonight acquired those homes after the substation already existed, the current substation that we're talking about. So with that, I'll let Phil chime in.
Thank you, Tim. I know it's called rebuttal time, I'll begin by noting two things that we said that I will not rebut. One, we are professionals. Two, it is difficult to get a consensus, consistent opinion sometimes in Girdwood. And we've had that experience and it's been noted here. Tim's addressed a few of the issues, I was taking notes, let me speak to, I think the one that's really at the core of many of the comments you heard, and that is, isn't there somewhere else you could go? And, and this is where the comment about professionalism comes in. We have, as professionals, obligations to many audiences. The folks that live around our substation are certainly one. The other more than fifteen or sixteen hundred customers we have in Girdwood can't be excluded from that decision. We have then the broader Chugash customer base. We have, you know, any number of audiences we need to be faithful to. At the end of the day, customers pay the bills in our business. So when we are presented with a request by someone to do something different than we would otherwise do, we step back and think about that. The most logical place to do a substation project is where your substation is today, for any number of reasons, not the least of which is, that's where power comes in, that's where power radiates out from, and if you move from that spot, you have to sort of move all those other termination and beginning points as well. It was noted that we've had this discussion ongoing off and on since the mid-1990s. That's because it was in the mid-1990s that Chugash backed these additional lots and at that time began talking with the community about doing something. So we have, we have had this intended purpose in the community discussion for some period of time. When we went back in 2008 to re-initiate discussion after having?
Please summarize, sir.
Our position was, after studying alternative sites for about a year with the community and assessing the cost of those, we said, we'll have the discussion about moving if the community expresses a willingness to pay the incremental cost of moving to a different site and doing the work rather than what we would spend to do it at this site.
Okay. Mr. Pruez, you have a question?
Thank you. A couple of things, these, first, the question on this, this future construction of Figure Six C, on the seventy-foot communication tower that's twenty feet higher than the one that's on-site now, is, could you explain what that's for or will that, will there be any other communication companies using it?
Our substations have to talk to different places. So we put up a communications tower and there's generally microwave communications equipment installed on that and that's how they talk now. The communication structure we have at the site right now is fifty feet tall, the one in the plan is seventy feet tall. I just asked Ed why is it twenty feet taller? And without knowing specifically tonight, our feeling is probably because our communications people told us it needed to be that height. Now, you don't have the communications folks represented here, so I can't explain exactly why, but the purpose of the communications tower is to allow the system to talk to each other. There is data collected there that's transmitted back to us at a real-time basis. We have the ability from place here in Anchorage to operate the substation. In order for that to happen, we have to have two-way communication. Why it's seventy feet tall this time in the future and fifty feet now, I can't explain right now.
I know there's the, I was curious, you know, there, I know there's a fiber optic line that goes along with the railroad there. Have you started to convert? Because this is kind of old-school technology about using fiber optics and, and that communication methodology instead of microwave system?
Well, we sometimes have redundancy. I know our people have us set up on a microwave system and they want us to have an indigenous capability that is today provided via microwave. As far as alternatives to that, I'm not sure we have the staff here to engage in that discussion.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, Aliaska and other people, they do, they do, they use fiber optics and they, and they use satellite for secondary backup versus the microwave system. But, and then the other thing is, is that on your, on your, on your, your poles, your forty-two-foot poles, have you considered removing those and burying underground to across a road or someplace a little further away from the substation and then coming up with the, with the pole for esthetical value to the, to the, to the site?
No. Those are transmission structures. Those are the transmission structures that are there today and those are the transmission structures that will still be there with the planned work on the project. We do not underground transmission lines. We sometimes put them undersea and we have one minor exception to the rule I just told you, and that's a piece of line that runs underground only because it runs underground at the end of the north-south runway at Ted Stevens, Anchorage International. And there's a reason for that, and that is, you greatly increase the risk of a failure when you put a transmission line underground. And you want to make prudent decisions. In this case, we have a community fed by a transmission line that runs from point A to point B. And we would not want to do anything that would potentially degrade the reliability of that service for the entire community. So the one line we have underground across the end of Ted Stevens, similar voltage, guess what? We had a problem that at one time, somebody dug into it, it faltered out, and when it was out, it was out for six weeks until we could get people over from Italy to splice it and it cost about a quarter million dollars to repair. Fortunately, here in the Anchorage Bowl, we did have other paths for power, but in a community like Girdwood, we would not propose to put the transmission line underground that feeds the substation that feeds the community.
So a short utilidor with, with access would not work?
I'm sorry, what was the extent of that?
A short-span utilidor?
It would, it's not something we have factored in as a serious proposal. It's not the kind of thing that we would normally propose to do. Is it impossible? That's a whole different discussion we have to have. Is it the right decision for the community? We haven't determined that to be the right decision for the community. And really, at the end of the day, if you stop at a line here, go underground under the road, pop up overhead on the other side, do under the substation, I'm not sure how much gain that is.
Well, if the previous speaking seemed to have an issue with the, with poles, and I'm just curious about the flanning on that, so, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Just to follow up on the poles, what, I've been to Southern California, I've seen some very high poles, I don't know what they were, but they might have been telephone myself powers or whatever they were, but they were disguised in some way. Is there a way to do that cost-effectively?
Not that I'm aware of. To disguise a pole as something else. Not that I'm aware of.
I don't mean to make it look like something else. I mean to disguise it a little bit, to make it blend in a little bit more than a single steel structure. So I just wondered whether you'd looked into other options, other places have used to, when they ran across community opposition to appearance?
No. We have about, the line that feeds this substation runs about half a mile, thereabouts, from its takeoff point on the, on the highway. It cuts across the land for about half a mile on the edge of town to get to this substation site. It's a, there are two poles for each structure, so I don't know how many poles that is total. And, yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't looked at making them look different.
Ms. Chambers?
The chair, I was just going to, on that issue of the seventy-foot tall communication tower, that issue did come up with us in this zoning district, in this area in Girdwood, actually. It's, this happens to be an exempt receive-only antenna, and so they're actually exempted from all of our telecommunication regulations and, you know, there's federal regulations there that state that we have pretty severe limitations in regulating the receive-only antennas. Were it something like a cellphone tower or something like that, it'd be a different story, but they could have a monopole like this or even a guide tower by right at a hundred and thirty feet tall, actually technically a hundred and sixty feet, in this zoning district, so. And that's what the assembly regulations that were set, so that's the rules that we have governing these.
You said this is just a receiving tower? The rules only?
My understanding it's a receive-only, well, it's actually utility telemetry, let me put it that way, it's kind of our code term for it, it's not receive-only, it's utility telemetry. It's their communication system, it's not for commercial.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my question. Okay, Mr. Pruez?
Just to follow up on the tower, it's non-guide, is that, is that correct?
Yes, monopole.
Okay, and is it lit?
There should be no reason to light the communications tower, no. Well, are you talking?
Top of it?
Are you talking, I believe that is a hundred feet, isn't it Angela, that FAA kicks in?
It's usually two hundred feet, depending on your proximity to it. In your case, it may be less because of the, the flight patterns, it may be less than two hundred feet.
It may be lit?
No, it may be less than two hundred feet in height before the FAA gets involved, but unless the FAA requires lighting or marking, they would not generally be lit or marked.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Can we close the public hearing? Matter of rest for the board. Ms. Pease, you've moved to approve?
Yes, in the matter of 2010, 133, I moved to approve with the staff department recommendations in our packet.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You speak to your motion, please, Ms. Pease.
Yes, I will not be supporting my motion. I came in wanting to hear more and have listened carefully, and my findings are, for opposing this are as follows. I don't feel it meets the land use regulations for conditional uses under AMC 2150 O2O-C, which is will be compatible with existing and planned uses in the surrounding neighborhood and the intent of its use district. The GC3 and GC2 area are commercial area, but this is an industrial use with the seventy-two foot tower, which we just learned is a utility telemetry tower and therefore exempt from some of the municipality's tower regulations, so it could go up to a hundred and thirty feet and have guy wires and that sort of thing. There are also forty-two-foot-high heavy-duty transmission lines and then the nature of the station is a fairly substantial snarl or amassing of grid, of grid of cables and other structures. It's a magnitude of change in aesthetic appearance and I don't think that it can be considered to be compatible with the plan for a commercial and residential area in this tied to confines. I'm also concerned that it doesn't meet D2 regarding the demand for and availability of public services and facilities. The residents expressed concerns about evacuation from the Old Girdwood Town Site past this site should there be some kind of an emergency. Some of the homes do not have any access except along the borders of this site. And there's also concern about a fire in this vicinity, given that there's only a volunteer fire department and no, no hydrant capacity. And also section, or same code, D4, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities. And look at this map, it looks as if the six lots involved, you know, could be somewhere in the vicinity of eight percent or so of the land available in the Old Girdwood Town Site. The idea is for a compact residential and commercial community, and this is a fairly substantial piece out of that. We, I do know that there is a letter of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, but we also heard testimony that this is an issue, that that's a departure from several years of concern about this site and, and it's a little bit mysterious, there's no supporting information from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. We did hear that there was a substantially lopsided vote opposing this site of a fifty-two to seven within the last couple of years. Finally, the Girdwood area plan emphasizes preserving and enhancing community character and especially developing a built setting that harmonizes and blends with the natural setting. And we all know that the commercial recreation and visitor industry, including the upscale visitor industry, are very fundamental to the Girdwood economy, and this is the gateway to the Girdwood Valley. And there really is no way to make, to beautify industrial site like this so close to the main gateway intersection. So we're not charged with finding the best So, we're not charged with finding the best site, but we're asked whether a conditional use for this facility is appropriate on this site, and having heard the testimony and considered the longstanding support of, and a really highly aesthetic standard for this community, as evidenced in the Girdwood Plan and some of the aesthetic standards adopted in the Girdwood Title IX of the Land Use Code, I'm opposing the, this conditional use.
Any other comments from the Commission? Ms. Shosman, is that...
My comments are going to be a lot briefer than Ms. Pease, and although I recognize Ms. Pease's comments, I am going to be supporting this motion, because from what I can gather from all the testimony from both the petitioner and the citizens, I do have to respect the vote of the Board of Supervisors. I believe that they have made an econo, I believe the citizens of Girdwood have made an economic decision to support this site, even though it may not be aesthetically attractive and not the preferred site, but I believe that they've made that decision based upon the desire not to have their rates significantly raised. And in today's economic environment, I can understand and support that decision. So, I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Any other comments from members of the Commission? Mr. Wilson? Well, I've asked some questions about the visual aesthetics, which I'm hearing from several people and who've testified tonight. I think that overall, the need for an upgraded electrical reliability and at a cost-effective level is important for all of the communities, and I would, I would hope that, I guess this is just a hope rather than a requirement, but a goodwill effort by the, by the petitioner would be made to work out a, some kind of a visual improvement, even though it may not be what some would desire. So, in that, in that regard, I'm going to support the motion. Mr. Parks?
I too will be supporting this based on the needs to have reliable electricity into 1,600 members of the Chugatcha User Group in Girdwood. I too would have some concerns about the look, I know this area very well, and I know it has some aesthetic value, but with the economic issues that we have, I think this is the right thing to do.
Any other Commissioners have any comments?
I get to top last, then. I am concerned about the visual appearance of that taller tower, and I would hope that Chugatcha would take into consideration some way of perhaps getting fiber optics or dual fiber optics or something so they have backup without having to have that, that tower, but I will be supporting this also. So, there is opposition, so we need to use our machines. Please vote, a yes vote approves it, no vote disapproves. Conditional use. You ready?
I'm approved.
Oh, no, 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 the screen. No, I'm sorry, I have to go over the draw.
That passes. We will reconvene at about two minutes, okay? Reconvene in the December 6, 2010 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. An administrative thing before we get going here, we're not going to get to case number 6, 2010-135 by the Alaska Baptist Family Services. So, that will be number one on the list next week, the 13th, and also, we will not get to case number seven, which is the Municipality of Anchorage in Ordinance Amendment Title 21. So, those two were postponed until next week due to lack of time. The other thing is, is we've got to get our public testimony done, I believe, before 11:30 tonight, and then I can extend the meeting, or we can extend the meeting for deliberations. So, we need to move swiftly on the next case, which is 2010-134, Cookin' at Tribal Council zoning condition use for Correctional Community Residential Center. If we could have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Extremely briefly, Cookin' at Tribal Council currently operates the Shon Lute facility, it's a community correctional residential center. In Mountain View, on page 50 of the staff packet, you can see their existing site, and what they're doing is proposing to move it because they are limited at 20 beds and need to expand the facility that was pretty much known at the time that they had constructed their original site in 2008 or moved in. This facility is a conditional use in the I-1 zoning district, they're proposing there be up to 49 residents and one onsite program manager. The department has determined that this does meet the standards for conditional use subject to conditions of approval 1 through 9 on pages 12 and 13 of the staff packet. And to let you know at the end of discussion, the petitioner has provided some proposed landscaping plans which do meet our condition on the landscaping, pending some finalization of details, they were inadvertently left behind by staff, however, the petitioner's provided them for you tonight. Thank you.
Let's go ahead with the petitioner's presentation here, you have 10 minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Tim Potter with Alage Cam, representing Cookin' at Tribal Council tonight for the Shon Lute project. I'm very excited to be here tonight because it actually is a fulfillment of a significant success. You saw the original Shon Lute, meaning new beginning, and it has 20 beds in it at this time. The positive news is, is that the project and program has been very successful, it's undersized as its current location, it wants to say, stay in Mountain View, and a new location within Mountain View has been identified, and that is what is before you tonight. This would slightly more than double the size of the existing facility and provide an additional 30 beds for people to participate within the program. Obviously, it enlarges the facility, as you can see on the floor plan and the site plan that have been submitted for review. It has primarily a south exposure to a courtyard. It is a project that involves three lots along Mountain View Drive, and increases the size of the facility and the usable space. The other facility is extremely Spartan, and this provides the space to grow and have even a better facility to operate the program. As I indicated, the community has embraced Shon Lute as a member of the community, and Shon Lute actively participates within the community, and I believe there's a representative from the community council here tonight that will attest to that. They've become a favored member of the community, and in fact, when there was discussion about moving out of Mountain View, the Mountain Community, Mountain View Community stepped forward and asked if there was an opportunity for the Shon Lute development to stay within the Mountain View community. We are in agreement with the staff's recommendations, but wanted to emphasize and clarify and give a little bit more detail on a couple of items. First is, as part of this approval, the Planning Commission will need to grant a waiver, as was done with the original Shon Lute, to have a less-than-standard requirement for separation from a school or another CCRC, and in this case, we've kind of flipped to the other side of Clark Middle School, and we have an effective about 2,700-foot walking distance to the site, to the front door of the Clark Middle School, whereas on page 50, you'll see a drawing that gives kind of the dimensions that are involved, with about a 2,700-foot walking distance by sidewalk in that, that's what the actual walking distance is, as the crow flies from property to property, as the code indicates, it's 945 feet or 46 feet. And with that, there is no gate at that location, so in fact, anyone going around either has to physically jump the fence that is there, and it is a six-foot-high fence around the school, and that little jet-out on Clark Middle School is where there's a baseball field at this time. So, we believe that the separation distance is actually more, as you can see on this, than at the original facility with 20 beds. It is an industrial development. The arrow photo in the middle and photos, if you'd like me to pass them around, show you what the current use of the property is, which is of a holding yard for vehicles, both wrecked and not wrecked, impounded boats, trailers, and a variety of things, and is probably what we don't necessarily want to see on a totally upgraded Mountain View Drive and the upgrades within Mountain View. That is probably one of the key items. The other is that in staff discussions or discussions with the staff following our submitted, and when we had a post-op meeting, there was a suggestion that we should have a buffer landscaping on three sides of the property. As our landscape plans have indicated, we will have arterial landscaping, visual enhancement along Mountain View Drive, which is required by code. We also have all the landscaping around the foundation plantings as required by code, and we wanted to express to the Commission that, in fact, we believe that a 10-foot-wide buffer standard requirement is not only onerous from a cost estimate standpoint with a solid wood fence, it comes to about $126,000, of which we'd rather see that money spent on the actual structure and facility itself, we think that's a better investment, and then allow over time for those program components that they do, including their landscaping business and landscaping maintenance business, be able to then enhance the property over time. There is a very good cyclone fence around the property, and we would put a slatted textured material in that 700 lineal feet of fencing, and then we have, would have new wooden fence, as the current Shon Lute facility has out on Mountain View Drive with landscaping. So, we'd be meeting all of the requirements of the code, and we would ask some accommodation as the staff is put in, but I'd like some direction to the staff, so when we come in for approvals in the future for a landscape plan, that they give us some opportunity to understand that a 10-foot planting bed on the west side of the property interferes with travel lanes and circulation to some of the industrial components of our educational and work experience program. So, in an effort, and I'm sorry you didn't get it till tonight, we thought it would have been distributed, but we had, and I put together three examples of things that are programmatically tied to the Shon Lute program, of why I believe that over time, it's more benefit to both the community and the residents to allow them to landscape and plant appropriately. Have a courtyard outside, possibility of a garden shed and a greenhouse, and then an orchard area on the south property line, of which there's all types of arboretum-type species that can be grown, could be that they be a variety of the 40 kinds of apples that can be grown here on wood stock from other plants, that type of thing. Ray's Gardens, much like March Brothers has, and they have fresh material for their own cooking in their facility and meals, but also in the Mountain View diner, which is part of the education and work into the workforce program and training that the facility does. So, with that, I've shown a variety of different things that would, I believe, meet the intent of softening the backyard area or the southern exposure. Likewise, we're not totally entrenched in this 10-foot setback requirement, and likewise, it seems foolish to have a requirement for 10-foot on-center trees, half of which are evergreen trees, that would then in the future block the southern exposure during the low sun angle into the heart of the site, which is the courtyard eating and community room area of the facility. So, we would ask the Commission to give a little bit of direction to the staff that they believe that programmatically this can be worked out, and we come back with a plan that works with that idea of softening the living environment and working into the program itself. We do have a variety of people from room architects in the audience as well, any specifics about the building and the materials and the colors, layout, as well as we have Cookin' at Tribal Council representatives and Shon Lute representatives as well. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer those.
Okay, Mr. Bruce?
Does, the facility being placed here in an industrial area, will there be any downstream effects on if a neighbor, say for instance, to the west or to the further north or surrounding was to do, you know, industrial-type activity for noise or, or anything like that? Would there be any limiting, would it adversely affect the facility? Would there be a conflict with the existing use of the...
I really don't think so. In fact, we've gone out and talked to many of the surrounding property owners, and they've actually embraced the facility coming into the community. As far as noise, we are designing the facility to be okay with code-required sound emissions from adjacent properties. Likewise, if they go for any new development and a new permit, they'll have a 10-foot buffer landscaping requirement on their side as well, and/or sound barrier fencing, that type of thing, of which we'll work with them on. So, no, we don't believe that that'll be a problem.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the Chair, I just wanted to clarify, I think, I think you spoke to this, but there are no entrances to the Clark Middle School grounds, you're saying, on the western side of the school?
Actually, we actually went out and recall that at one point, there was a project that was going to be a 12-screen cinema, and in that site plan, there had been a gate required for that approval at that corner of the schoolyard. However, that project went away, and the gate never went in, and we've gone out and physically gone around the perimeter of the school grounds to make sure that there's not a gate there, and there is no opening in the fence there.
Okay, and just since it's not labeled on the figure provided to us, where is the entrance into this fenced campus? Where's the, where's the entrance? Of the, what... Where's the entrance? Reproduction, we're given, doesn't show the buildings and I don't know quite how they sit on the site. I mean, I can buy there, but where's the entrance that students and?
The entrance is on the east end of the building.
Okay. It's off of Goff Street?
Effectively, yes. There is an entrance off of Commercial Drive around here, but the primary entrance is over in that area by where the library facility is.
And just one more on that topic. Does the petitioner know whether there have, what's the record been with regard to Clark Middle School? Has there ever been any complaints or based on the existing site?
We have no knowledge of any existing complaints about the existing Sean Lute facility and I'm not aware of any objection. I believe that one of the Cookin and Travel Council representatives here has spoken to the principal and had got an indication that there was no objection. In fact, they were very supportive.
Okay, is there a letter or anything like that?
Lisa? Okay. Introduce yourself.
Hello, commissioners. I am Lisa Rigo. I'm general counsel for Cookin and Travel Council and I did meet with Principal Williams and she was very supportive, but we did not request a letter of support to the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I was just looking at the sun exposure there. How's that going to work on scheme one, two, or three?
Well, if you know that or note that those are deciduous trees in all cases, so during the winter at your sun angle, they'll be without leaves and will get full sun exposure into the site.
Be no fence along that side?
It will be a slatted.
Well, that'll remain.
Screen fence, but by sun angle, the sun will reach into the building, no problem.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? You have a minute and four seconds for rebuttal. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify?
My name is Don Kramer. I'm president of the Mountain View Community Council and I really have the, I'm here to represent the neighborhood. We really fully support the efforts of Sean Lute and their expansion and this is not something we take lightly. Lots of times, neighborhoods like Mountain View get kind of stuck with social service programs that aren't always positive for the neighborhood, but I'm very happy to say that Sean Lute has been exemplary in their contributions to the neighborhood. They've been, they're doing, it's a needed program and at the same time, it's been a good program for the neighborhood. Their residents are well-supervised, their residents are very enthusiastic and have good attitudes and they've been good volunteers in a number of our community projects. So because of that, the community council has unanimously supported their efforts to expand and there have also been letters of support from one of our major new businesses, Credit Union One and the Anchorage Community Land Trust, which is also a organization that plays a major role in the neighborhood.
Are there any questions? Okay, Ms. Chambers, you pushed the button.
That was an accident.
Oh, okay, accident. All right.
I'm available if there's questions.
Okay, well, I will eliminate you from the queue then. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Okay, Mr. Potter, you got about a minute and?
If there's any other questions, I would just really like to underscore that it is a pleasure to be back here with a program that people were worried about to start with and now it has a proven track record. It has really entered into the community and become part and parcel of it and this facility will be so much better than the original facility. I would note that you can all help the Sean Lute project by going and having lunch at the Mountain View diner. You won't find service any better anywhere in the city. The food is good, the menu has gotten even better and it's definitely of value. So if you can do that, you'll learn a little bit more and meet some of the residents of the Sean Lute project and they will be continuing to run the restaurant. So it's pretty amazing to go see how this project works. I was able to go with Lisa to the Delancey Street project out in San Francisco, which is this modeled after and we're moving forward in a supportive fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, question for staff before we start making motions. Do you want us to deal with the waiver for school separation distance first, then followed by the action on the?
I think the chair, if you could first make sure the public hearing is closed, move to continue past 11:30 and then you can probably deal with the rest of it. You could do two separate motions.
That is my question. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, public hearing is closed and I think we do need a motion to let us function past 11:30, so. Ms. Yoshimura, is that?
Well, I have to move for approval on case 2010-134, but I'll make a motion first that we extend our time past 11:30 if that's necessary.
I think it may be. Okay, and Mr. Potter, are you willing to second that?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any objection? Okay, we can go to midnight. All right, now let's go ahead and deal with the two parts of this thing. I believe we ought to go ahead and deal with the school separation distance first.
Correct.
Ms. Yoshimura, Ms. Pease seconded it.
Through the chair, in the matter regarding 2010-134, I move to waive the requirement of the 1,250-foot school separation requirement for the CCRCs.
Been seconded by Ms. Pease. You want to speak to your motion?
Well, I thought it was interesting. There are several ways one can measure distances, but the fact that the 2,700, it's 2,700 feet as far as a walking distance is concerned versus the 945-feet linear distance, I think demonstrates the appropriate separation and distance requirement.
Any other comments, Ms. Pease?
Yes. I would just like to add to Ms. Yoshimura's finding that the ordinance for community residential correction facilities, 2150-035V explicitly notes the flexibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission to issue a waiver based on the proposed program and any other circumstances. And Sean Lute has located, operated at a location of less than 800 or 817 feet from Clark Middle School for the past several years and we know of no record of complaints from Clark Middle School. And in fact, we heard testimony from a delegate to the school's principal that the principal is very supportive of the project. In addition, applicants are screened for this program and there are no sex offenders admitted into the program. And we've also heard that the Clark Middle School campus is fenced around the perimeter and therefore, the walking distance, effective walking distance between the two entrances is 2,760 feet. So, and finally, I asked Ms. Chambers if there were specific concerns that the separation distance is supposed to resolve, such as schoolchildren mingling on the sidewalks with people from these residential centers. And the answer is no. We're supposed to look for any concerns and in this case, based on the record of Sean Lute in the neighborhood, there don't appear to be concerns. So I think we're well-founded in granting the waiver.
Any further discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, now we have a second motion by Ms. Yoshimura.
In the matter of 2010-134, I move for approval with a slight modification to unit, to item number eight. I would substitute the following language, provide a landscaping plan which is compatible with the program for the rehabilitation of the residents and does not need to meet required code landscaping requirements. I would like to speak to my motion in just a minute. This commission, several weeks ago, approved a project, a nonprofit project for Carlik Manor with several conditions that were placed upon it by staff and this commission, including an elevator and including heated driveways, heated sidewalks. And that total cost, when it came to actually determining what the amount was, was over $800,000, I have been told, which has now resulted in this facility not being able to be opened this winter. And so I want to caution both the commissioners and staff that when we put some of these very prescriptive items in, we delay the ability to service those members of the community that need our help the most. And so I am very supportive of the waiver of the landscaping requirement. I think that many of us don't realize what the actual costs are and so I appreciate Mr. Potter's letter identifying the cost of being $126,000. I'm particularly encouraged that this landscaping can be done by the residents as part of the rehabilitation of the program, of their, in the program. And I have every confidence that they will do so and I would hope that this commission would approve it so that we don't have to deal in a prescriptive manner. I'd also like to commend the architecture for the building, which I think is aesthetically attractive and compatible with the neighborhood, but yet modest so that we can see by this plan that there is money being spent for services and rehabilitation and not a monument. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers?
Just through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, just a clarification on what you had stated. I fully understand what you were saying and I believe this is, I'm correct here, but you're saying to, that it meets the intent, you're not waiving anything required by code at a minimum, the buffer landscaping, et cetera, along the other lot lines that Mr. Potter was referred to. You know, we've come to agreement on the concept plans. I believe they're fully going to meet our intent without being prescriptive. However, code required it, of course, we don't want to set a precedent of the Planning and Zoning Commission granting variance where they couldn't or somebody assuming that in the future. I'm just trying to be clear.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused. I understand that there has to be arterial landscaping along Mountain View Drive.
Right.
But the other landscaping?
Correct, it's not required by code.
It's not required by code.
No.
But what about the perimeter buffering? What about this cost of $126,000?
I don't know what all the costs were. I think that is, if we did the buffer landscaping, which is very linear and not always appropriate either. Mr. Potter can refer to the costs. We are in agreement on there and I am in agreement with where you're going with your, I believe the department is in agreement with where you're going with your condition.
Okay, do you have language then that would be more clarifying, but yet still supportive of the premise?
I think you could just support the concept plans with the statement that where, as you had already stated with your finding regarding these types of facilities, not going above and beyond what we need to do to stop the program from going in right now when we don't need to do that.
Ms. Yoshimura, through the chair. Just to clarify, as we went through our post-op meeting, you know, the planning department has a couple of different sections within it and sometimes one segment isn't in line with what the other segment is. And in this case, one segment of the planning department indicated that they really felt that buffer landscaping, even though landscaping is not code-required in this situation on three sides, it is on Mountain View Drive, they indicated that they wanted to have buffer landscaping standards as a requirement of the conditional use and because the planning commission can require things like that. In discussions with other people on staff, we came to a resolution, primarily Angela and myself, that, and that's why I created those three options, to show how we could programmatically do a really cool thing here and the residents would benefit, the community would benefit, everybody would benefit, but it didn't have to be a prescribed set of sensors, half of which are evergreen, at huge expenses. It could be done over time. So I believe the language as you currently have it, as put forward by the staff, is fine.
Okay.
What I was really looking for was exactly what you put into the record as far as the commission's intent to meet the programmatic needs of the project and not have a prescriptive standard applied, which would be the buffer landscaping. And the $126,000 is to have a solid wood fence that's 700 linear feet and then trees, every other tree being deciduous and then evergreen, have a minimum height as required by the code and then three shrubs per tree. That's $126,000 using the city's established bid tabs from last year's bid documents. So rather than trying to rewrite the language right now, I think what you have put on the record and if the commission supports that, that's ample clarification to the staff when we turn in our plans to be able to come up with a resolution and I'm satisfied with that.
So you changed the wording back to what was originally?
Except the original wording.
Okay. Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to add to the findings that, first, I really appreciate the creative and productive use of the site with regard to the landscaping and second, I think this approval meets the conditions of 2150-020, general standards for conditional use approval. In particular, I thought we should mention that although this will be a primarily residential use on industrial land, the area surrounding this parcel has commercial, industrial vacant land on three sides. There appears to be no shortage of land for those other purposes and we often take land out of residential use. In this case, we're increasing some residential use, although it's transitional housing and we're following the comp plan in providing a variety of house, housing for a variety of populations. And finally, this program has an excellent track record in this neighborhood. So for all those reasons, I think we should be supporting this potential use.
Any comments from members of the commission? Okay, is there any objection? Then it is approved. Okay, next week, we'll be picking up those two items that we missed. Yeah, I guess we do, before we pack up, let's, I need a motion to postpone on items six and seven. Okay, you got Nancy, Mr. Wilson. Any objection on postponing items six and seven to next week? Yeah, that passes. Also, next week, start thinking about which committees that you'd like to serve on because hopefully we'll have a full house and we can fill up these committees that are somewhat lacking. I noticed we got two people with all kinds of airport master plan experience, just by reading your resumes. reading your resumes. And we haven't had anybody there for a while. Anyway, let's, need a motion to adjourn? Seconded somebody? There we go. Any objection? Or adjourned?
Just to remind you, there's no meeting with the director this month, but there is a meeting next Monday night.